Welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for March the 14th, 2023. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the numbers of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief, to the point, and noncumulative. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. So let's take attendance.
So noted.
And I'll need a motion or discussion for approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals minutes of February 14th, 2023.
So moved. Support?
If I have a motion and support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. So let's call the first item, item 1T-7178 Loser Road. So if you could state your name and address and why a variance is needed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Stacy Morgan with Exegent Design and Build, speaking on behalf of Genevieve Jamil of 7178 Loser Road. What I'm simply seeking to request is an approval for a 32-by-50 sport court that will have an unilluminated, not illuminated, sorry, black mesh cover on the west side of the house, the back end of the sport court, with one adaptation per the item, which it said it was 12 feet, but in actuality, it will be 10 feet with the post as well as the net.
Okay, so this matter was called at the December meeting. So the members who were present at that meeting only are eligible to vote on this matter, so that is Giagrande, Taylor, Ford, and Gittleman. So do any of you have any further questions?
I do not.
So I'll open this up to public comment. Anyone like to comment on this? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to those four for discussion or a motion.
Well, let's get the day started. All right. Mr. Chairman, with regard to, so are you able to be the chairman?
Yes, I'm still able to be the chairman.
Okay, I'm just curious. Mr. Chairman.
I am not eligible to vote, but I'm still the chairman.
I understand, okay. With regard...
There will be no coups this evening.
Oh darn.
No usurping of authority.
I even brought my hat.
Okay. Please continue with your motion, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the permission request, request for dimensional variance at 7178 Loser Road. Starting with the permission request first, I'm going to move that the permission request be approved as submitted. Based on the information provided, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to its height. With that having been said, moving on to the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that it also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the location, the topography, and frankly, trying to contain the items that would be used on this sports court. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors. We have seen none provided and can see none that would evidence themselves. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated. We do, this is setback far from the road, will not be evidenced by adjoining neighbors, and this is not something that is self-created. He's got a nice location where this can be, and this can be placed. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction. Use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours, and no illumination of the sports court is to be permitted.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. All those in favor who are eligible to vote, say aye.
Can we replace the second?
Oh, you're right.
Unfortunately, Stephanie wasn't at the meeting, so she won't be able to second the motion.
Oh.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so why don't we, or so we have a new second, why don't we take a roll call vote of those four, just so we're clear?
Kiki?
Yes.
Ford? I'm sorry.
Nope.
I'm sorry, let's start again.
Yep.
Ford?
Yes.
Okay, Giangrande?
Yes.
Henry?
So I'm not eligible.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four to zero. Gittleman.
Gittleman.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think we've got that. We've got the Fab Four. Okay. Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Okay. So calling the next item, item 1P-3930 Devon Gables. State your name and address.
My name is Adam Marciel from Gessamy Landscaping. Members of the board, thank you for your consideration for our request for the project located at 3930 Devon Gables Court. I am, excuse me, I am here on behalf of the homeowner, Mike Simona. Mr. Simona acquired three lots totaling 4.36 acres to build a home for his wife and children and allowed us to design a home and the amenities we were seeking approval for. The talented team of professionals is joining us today. The home architect, Lou DeRosier from DeRosier Architects, who can speak to any architectural questions you may have. The home builder, Tom Shafu from Orchard Construction, who can address any construction-related questions. The landscape architect and landscaper, Randall Marciel from Gessamy Landscaping, who will address any landscape-related questions. And finally, Jordan Siegel, the legal representative for Mr. Simona. I would like to start by bringing your attention to the unique nature of the property and how it affects our application. The site is bordered by three roads, Long Lake, Mystic Valley, and Pemberton, and an existing masonry wall runs the length of the eastern property line. There is an elevation change of nearly 30 feet from Long Lake Road to the highest point of the property, and the property is surrounded by mature deciduous and evergreen trees. This unique topography and orientation introduced challenges in designing the site in order to create space and locations for the proposed amenities. Based on the planned locations and screening, we believe that the items we are requesting approval for do not present a negative impact from a visual, noise, light emission, or safety perspective to the users, surrounding neighbors, or community. The site amenities are intended for the occasional day use by the homeowner and his children. Again, we understand that screening of these items is a critical component of approval. Beneficially, the size and the layout of the property allows for total perimeter screening as shown in our landscape plan, allowing no sightlines to any of the proposed amenities. As such, we propose to utilize large, mature existing trees and to infill the site perimeter with new, large evergreen trees varying in height from 16 to 24 feet, and include lower-growing shrubs to complete the visual landscape barrier. This will accomplish a dense and effective visual screen into the site from abutting roads and nearby homes. The larger evergreens will also provide an effective noise barrier. We understand the list of questions in the ZBA application for variance and permission requests are geared towards providing the board an understanding of how the requested items will impact neighboring properties, pedestrian and vehicular routes, be of a harmonious nature with the community, and to ensure such items do not present a health, safety, or welfare risk to the intended users and general public. To that effect, we held a meeting in January with the neighbors to discuss the project. Based in our meeting, we made a few changes to our original submittal, which included the following. We removed the request for a security booth to be located in the Mystic Valley frontage. We also reduced the height of the pool cabana from 19 to 14 feet. We added additional shrub plantings along the property border. We lowered the height of the proposed perimeter aluminum fence from five feet to four feet and placed it two feet inside the property line. And furthermore, we located all the accessory structures at least 40 feet from the property line rather than the required 35-foot rear yard setback. Lastly, the home and proposed amenities are appropriate in size and scale for the large property. Because only one home is built on the combined lots makes for a far less dense development than what potentially it could have been. The possibility of multiple homes on the property, each with their own amenities and accessory structures, would make for a far denser development within the neighborhood. In our submittal, we have tried to provide as much detail as possible to the board in order for them to make a fair decision. Following this list of items, if you'd like me to proceed that way, that we are requesting approval for.
Do you want to use a pointer? Do you need a pointer?
Um, yeah.
If you do, you just hit the red button, or do you want to use your PowerPoint?
I'll use it.
Okay.
Because there's so many, would you dislike me just to go down by list and point each individual out? Is that the...
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful particularly for the public so that they know the current up-to-date list.
We're seeking a variance request for the roof height and a permission request for accessory structure. It's nearly 38-foot in height. This was part of the original building permit but was deferred by the building official to the zoning board of appeals, excuse me.
So that's the 26-foot-high gazebo. It's located in the second-story terrace. Maximum height from grade is 38 feet, and it's located in the Mystic Valley Drive frontage.
Correct. The next item is a pool and associated landscape features. So that is obviously the blue that you see in the middle there. So the pool includes a rock scape with a waterfall, bridges...
Four bridges?
Four bridges, a slide maximum of six foot tall, a 13-foot pergola, a 14-by-14-foot sunken fire pit. There's decorative fire bowls that are around the pool that are 18 inches tall, and there's raised masonry planters that surround the pool.
And that's, what's the size of the pool cabana?
The size of the pool cabana is...
That's also located in the Mystic Valley Drive frontage.
Oh, there you go.
So yes, the fourth item is the pool cabana.
Okay.
Max height 14 feet, located on the Mystic Valley frontage.
Okay.
Within the setback. Again, we reduced the height of that from 19 to 14 feet.
Yep, I apologize.
Okay.
You mentioned that at the start.
Our next item is a sports court. Max height of 13 feet to the top of the backboard with 10-foot fencing. That's again located in the Mystic Valley frontage. The following item is a site fountain with an overall height of, with a max height of six feet and a water depth of a foot and a half. That's on the easterly property side. The next item is a masonry boundary wall, which would run the length of Long Lake, connecting to the entry gates that would be off Mystic Valley. That is a six-foot masonry wall.
And the gates are five feet?
Yes, we'll get to the, the gates are next. So again, we had, number eight was a security booth, which we've taken...
That's gone.
That's gone.
Yep.
Yeah, so the max height of the gates is five feet, and this would tie into the masonry wall that would run the length of Long Lake. Next is a proposed perimeter fence that would run along the Mystic Valley and Pembroke frontages with a height of four foot.
And that's aluminum? That's an aluminum?
Correct.
Okay. And the color is black?
Color is black.
Okay.
The next item is a garden gazebo with a 14-foot height, located in the Pembroke frontage, so 14-foot total height. The next item is a site entry next to the house, to the backyard. So we'll have two masonry walls with gates, five-foot columns with a total length of 40 foot.
And what's the height of the masonry wall? That's existing? That's the existing masonry wall?
There's nothing existing.
Okay, so what's the height of that wall?
The height of the column is five foot, and then it drops down to three foot.
Okay.
And the last item, should I, do I bring up the, no, we won't do that. Okay. So yeah.
That was an item that was not part of the notice. That's what he's asking about.
Okay. So can you just, because you mentioned it quite substantially, can you just kind of review the landscape plan again?
Yep.
Can you show us the height of the trees and the location?
So as you can see, let me show you the, we, the property is, again, from Long Lake Road...
Get it to the rub on the top. Yep, yep, that, but I think you changed something. Okay. There you go.
From Long Lake Road to, basically to the top of the property is nearly 30 feet. The property is surrounded. The former owner must have liked trees and planted many mature evergreens and deciduous trees, both around the property, on the property, essentially surrounding the property. So we want to make use of those trees to screen the property. Even now, as the property sits and the sightlines that are provided, the house is very setback, and it's even difficult to see during the construction phase before any sort of plantings have been added. So our plan is to make use of those big existing evergreens and deciduous trees and to infill with additional large 16-to-24-foot evergreen trees to complete, to make a complete visual barrier to, from any of the roads looking into the property. As you can see, here we go. Here's a quick view from Long Lake facing north into the property. It's difficult to even see the home that's being built, the houses being built beyond there. This is even taken, I think this was taken when we originally submitted last spring, so that there's not even leaves on a lot of those trees. Here's a view from Mystic Valley. You see the house and beyond, but these are both trees that are on the property and outside of the property line that run the length of Mystic Valley, screening the home. On the backside of, from Pembroke, looking towards the south, you can see, or Pemberton, excuse me, you can see the, you know, the amount of trees and screening that is there. And lastly, this is from the corner of Long Lake and Mystic Valley. Looking into the property, you can see the roof line to the left there of the house just slightly, but you can see how screened the house is currently, and according to our landscape plan, you know, how we plan to continue to fill in with that screen. In order to demonstrate that even further, that topography difficulty and change, we did a few cross-sections, and this is from the backside of the property, and you can see the height of the evergreens and the angle of the, and the size of the car, you know, the screening, the fence, you know, the view to the property will be limited at best for, to be able to see in. Here's a view from Mystic Valley, where we plan to locate the sport court. Again, you can see size and scale of cars and people in relation to the property, the screening, and what they'll be able to see into the property.
So just walk us through, what was the analysis that went behind the decision to put the sports court there?
Again, the biggest challenge of the property was, it's essentially, it was, all the grade ran up to a point. So we had to make, it was very difficult to find a flat spot without retaining, major retaining. One of the items that was left off was two large retaining walls. They'll need to be approved there, almost 19 feet in height, split in two. That's in order just to create a flat spot. Let me go back to the landscape plan. So again, that grade from Long Lake is the greatest, but even from Pemberton and the like, that grade increases. So we are essentially building, the house is built on a hilltop, and to create any sort of flat area or have any sort of flat area short of the area directly behind the house where the pool is located, there's retaining walls, everything meets the ordinance retaining-wise except for the ones that were held off of the, this application. But that area was the area that provided the most flat space for us to be able to put that sports court, at the same time allowing for some sort of lawn space for the homeowner to enjoy, which is in this area here. If you see all these lines here, these are, this is all the grade sloping up towards the house, and it's the same thing on every, every area of the property. The grade slopes very, very quickly to the top of the property, making it very difficult to, you know, have any sort of yard space and/or amenities.
And on the sports court, I've gotten a note, it's a 10-foot-high fence. Is that a mesh fence, or is that a, what type of fence is that?
It would be a mesh fence.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, so I imagine there's a, how many people want to speak on this? Could you raise your hands? Okay, so it's important to us to hear each of you. It's important for you all to understand that we're looking for facts, and we're not looking for repetition of previous facts. So we've gotten quite a bit of correspondence that we've all read, so we understand that. So in the comments that we get tonight, what we'd like is additional information not already presented either in writing or in emails, or that has been presented by someone, you know, prior to you. So I guess, why don't we just go row by row? There's, you know, there's people that seem to be on this side, so we'll go, you know, this row first, and then, you know, go behind and behind that. So first row, you could step forward, state your name and address, and give us facts that we have not heard before.
Present ahead of time? You want to go ahead, Pam?
You want to do it, you're going to yield to, okay. All right, that's fine. I don't, I don't want to restrict your strategy if you've got, you know, sort of it. So you can state your name and address.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Pam Miller. I live at 3792 West Pemberton. So last night I submitted, which is, I think, the reason I'm going first here, this packet of information.
Yep.
That also contains some photographs of our neighborhood. So I just want to be able to speak to that as well as we go through it. So just as background, I've lived in the township for about 17 years. I've lived in this neighborhood for almost a decade, for about nine years. I'm requesting that this board deny all the variances that are being requested tonight and deny the appeal. So not to repeat everything that is presented in this packet, because I know that you have it, but I just want to state, you know, this variance and the variances that are being requested are going to change the character of our neighborhood in its entirety. Every single house in our neighborhood is going to be impacted, right? Every single house will be able to see not only the house, but all these variances as they pass by and they come in and out of the neighborhood, right? It will completely change the character. You know, on this first page here, you know, I showed you kind of what our neighborhood looks like. It's a really small neighborhood. It's got about 20 houses in it, right? Nobody, no other house is like this one being built, and no other house has anything in the front yard, any sort of structures or variances like the ones that are being requested today. You know, if you look at that second page in here, right, this is when you're coming into the neighborhood, and I took this picture back in the winter, and I like, I stopped my car, I got out because it was so beautiful, right? Our neighborhood is like a mini sanctuary, right? It has tons of natural trees, tons of beautiful, mature pine trees. Even though we're right off Telegraph, right, as soon as you enter the neighborhood, it's like you're in a completely different place, right? It's so super low-key, it's super quiet, it's incredibly peaceful, right? If these variances are allowed, it's going to give our neighborhood a completely different look and feel. You know, as I mentioned, it's going to be visible to every homeowner as they pass it by. It's going to be right in the front yard. You know, they want to, they want to screen it, and they're talking about screening it with the trees. I think primarily it's going to be screened by the fence and the wall that's being built. And not only is it being built like on the backside, but it's going to encompass the entire area. It's going to be on the side yard, it's going to be in the front yard. The house is going to be like a fortress right in the middle of our neighborhood, right? No other house in our neighborhood has that, right? Some houses have fences, there are a few, right? All the fences are in the backyard, you can't see it, you can't see anything from the road, right? So the fence alone and the wall and those structures are completely out of character, let alone if we move into the sports court and the pool and the cabana and the gazebo and the bridges on the pool and the lazy river and the incredible height of all the objects that are being built, right? All those, what I'm going to call entertainment-type features, right, that they want to place in the front yard. And I assume they're building those sort of features because they plan to entertain, right? And along with that comes increased traffic, increased people into our neighborhood. Currently, our neighborhood's super safe. It's, it's almost like it's hidden, like nobody really knows about it. I feel like a lot, a lot of people go into it, so it's a real easy place for our kids to ride bikes, for our kids to play, for us to walk around, because mainly it's, you know, a few visitors and primarily the homeowners who are coming into our neighborhood. You know, we don't have a lot of strangers, we don't have a lot of visitors. I guarantee with these features being built, that's going to increase the traffic flow and increase, you know, other strangers who are coming into our neighborhood. and increase, you know, other strangers who are coming into our neighborhood. You know, that sort of grand-scale entertainment is not consistent or harmonious with any other property in the neighborhood. There's another home, and you'll hear from the homeowner later on tonight, that I would say is very comparable to this lot size and, and, you know, almost the size of the house, although it's not nearly as tall. And I mentioned that in this packet too, right? So, this is the view of that house from the street, right? That house, you can barely see from the street, right, in comparison to this new build, which is visible from probably everybody's front yard. It's visible from the street, you can see it everywhere, right, because it sits up so high. So, this house is comparable. It has almost six acres, right? And it's also comparable in that it has three roads. It's surrounded by Mystic Valley, Pemberton, and Franklin, right? And yet, this house doesn't have any sort of entertainment features or structures in its front yard, right? It doesn't have anything that the other neighborhood, that the other neighbors can see, right? It blends in completely with the look and the feel of the other homes in the neighborhood. Even though this house is on six acres, even though this is probably the biggest house in our neighborhood, right, it still blends in completely with the rest of the neighborhood. So, in some, you know, none of the requested variances are going to blend in with the harmony of the neighborhood or the other 19 homes. The variances are going to completely change the character and the charm of the neighborhood from a quiet quaint neighborhood into some sort of tourist attraction. I think the increased risk, or the increased traffic would also be a risk to the health and safety of the residents and their children and their families in the neighborhood, and that I hope you deny it in its entirety and help us keep our beautiful serene neighborhood. You know, as I mentioned in my comments last night, this is the sort of house that she'd be built on a lot on Long Lake Road or on Middle Belt or on Pontiac Trail. This is not the sort of house with all these features that should be built in the middle of a small quaint neighborhood. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so, is there, is there anyone that now, so I have quite a list of things that were said, so that the look and the feel of the neighborhood will change, the structures will be visible to everyone, it's a, it's a fortress-like house, no other house like it in the neighborhood, entertainment features will attract more traffic, it's a grand state, a grand-scale entertainment structures, not harmonious with the neighborhoods, has hotel-like features, house on six acres has much fewer structures, none of the required variances will blend in, and the structures will create traffic that'll impact the health and safety. Does anyone have anything to add to those comments? Okay. And we've got those, those in our written materials as well.
Hi, my name's Eric Ballinger. I live at 3960 Mystic Valley Drive. I've lived over there for 15 years. My quick comment is, they were talking about the trees blocking the road, and they showed you some photos, that's, those are not true. You can go to the football field at the high school and you can see the house, you can see the second story of the house. You can drive down Telegraph, and you can look over the commercial buildings, the banks, you can see the house. You can drive along Lake, you can see the house clearly. Those did not represent what is being built there. And, you know, you probably, I hate to say it, probably could, we could all walk out there and probably see the house from here. So, I just kind of want to add to that, so, and I'm against all the variances.
But seeing the house isn't, isn't, I mean, you see houses when you drive lots of places.
Right, right, but, you know, they, they're going to be increased, they're going to be putting a pool house that's going to be 50 feet in the air driving down the street. I, you know, they have, you know, 40-foot trees right now that it's not going to cover. And a lot of these trees have needle burn from all the, the runoff that's coming off from the house right now. The middle of the, the streets are filled with mud from the runoff, you know, so, these trees are going to die, and they're going to be putting up, you know, 12-foot Christmas trees around this place, you know, to make up for the size of the base of these trees. It's, it's, it's crazy. So, I just wanted to voice those concerns real quick.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything additional to add, additional facts for us?
I'll try not to repeat too many things. The, Dave Cooper, I live at 3790 West Pemberton, around the corner from the property, and we, I'll just note that my, my kids sled, that was their sledding hill, that was, that was the neighborhood sledding hill. Tom Long used to love to have the kids come up and sled on that hill. The hill's been completely cut off at this point, re, and redone. So, any, I think that, and, well, one of the issues is I would, before anything, I would, I would urge the, I first wanted to thank, say thank you to all you volunteers, because I understand you're all volunteers on this board. Thank you for coming in here on this sunny evening to listen to people bickering about stuff. I understand it's probably a thankless job a lot of the time.
Bloomfield Township is a wonderful community to serve, and we're happy to do it.
Thank you for your service. The, I would, I would urge a hydrological study, talking about the runoff, the, I've seen a lot of things paved over on these, on these plans. We have a low point in the road, it's around the corner from the house on, on West Pemberton, and that's been flooding pretty much constantly since this cut, since this construction started. There's a, there's a low point right past, right around the corner to the left on Pemberton, and that's where all the water from the neighborhood ends up, and there's a lot more of it getting channeled to uncontrolled places. And I would also urge for a photometric study. When you talk about a 19,000-square-foot house with all these amenities, it beggars the imagination that there won't be quite a bit of lighting. We all know already what a nightmare light pollution is. But the thing I wanted to mention, this, to me most glaring, is this fence is just completely bizarre and strange, is the idea of a fence along the drive, along Mystic Valley Drive, along the entire front lawn of this house, which now has a park-like appearance to it. Nowhere else is there a fence along a drive that I'm aware of, certainly not in our neighborhood. It may be worth noting that Pemberton is a road as opposed to a drive. Mystic Valley is a drive. And just in, I mean, in total, we're talking about fencing and walling off this whole thing. Do we want to move toward a community of walled-in compounds? Because approving all this stuff is how you get a community of walled-in compounds. So, I'll, I'll leave it to the next speaker.
Thanks very much. Does anybody else like to add some new facts that haven't already been presented?
Good evening, my name's Larry Smith. I live at 3860 Mystic Valley, which is directly across from the subject property. We've lived in the township 32 years. We've actually lived in this house twice. We bought it, lived there eight years, sold it and bought it back 21 years later. So, I'm a big fan of the neighborhood, I'm a big fan of Bloomfield Township. To say that this, these variances are not harmonious to the neighborhood nor to Bloomfield Township, I think is a gross understatement. There's, there's a, this is a four-acre property. If this would have been planned differently, we wouldn't be here tonight, because everything would be in the backyard where it belongs. I think it's crazy to even consider putting a swimming pool, a sports court, and three or four accessory buildings in the front yard. I've never seen that in the township. I don't think I've ever seen it anywhere. So, and having a fence at the road in this neighborhood or any neighborhood in Bloomfield Township, I think is just outrageous. So, that's it.
Thanks very much.
Good luck tonight.
Succinct and, and additional facts. So, so only one of you can speak, so you'll have to elect which one will talk.
It's not.
Is this part of a school presentation, or?
No, no, but I think we'll both speak, if you're going to call it a school presentation, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm just asking, typically we have, so, so you're in the same household?
We are.
Okay, so typically there's one representative per house? So, I guess.
You know, this was, this is a large development, I understand that, right? I mean, I can have my wife come back up here and say what either my son or I will say, or ask one of our neighbors to do the same, it's totally up to you.
So, just be brief.
Okay, for sure.
Hi, my name is Everett Contras. I live at 3792 West Pemberton. I've lived, I've lived my whole life in Bloomfield Township. I moved into my house when I was three, and I've lived there for almost nine years. I love my neighborhood, and I love to ride my bike, like, in the neighborhood with my younger brother and my friends. And we feel safe in the neighborhood, because there isn't a lot of cars. We can ride our bikes without worrying about traffic. I love how my neighborhood is so pretty with all the trees, grass, birds. We have a lot of wildlife in our neighborhood, deers, foxes, sandhill cranes, turkeys, hawks, owls. I love that my neighborhood is quiet, it's safe and small. I don't want my neighborhood to change. I don't want lots of noise, strangers coming into the neighborhood causing lots of traffic, and I don't want brick walls or fences that will block the trees and annals. I hope you say no to changing my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Brian Contras of 3792 West Pemberton. Thank you for allowing multiple members of our house to speak tonight. I'm not going to pile on, but the concerns I have are for safety, primarily with the request for the fence being right on the road. If you've seen the roads, I mean, we could go for a visit, it's right across the street, they're narrow. And so, sometimes with the trees in the winter, with the, with the snow coming down, the, the roads get narrower. So, if there's not some room on the side of the roads for vehicles to pass one another, people could run into the fences. That's a, that's a concern. The concern on Long Lake Road with the masonry fence sort of stems from the concern or the issues we had with the architect's sign that was up. It made it very difficult to see and to turn out of the neighborhood onto Long Lake Road. So, if you're considering that, you have to consider looking at how far that setback needs to be. Certainly up along the road itself is going to present an issue for, for the safety of everybody coming out of that neighborhood. The other concern, and I think it may be less because the guard shack is gone, but an entry gate to the property right off of Long Lake Road could cause congestion and backup, should there be a number of cars entering the neighborhood at any given time if you're waiting for entry to the gate. So, you may have a situation where people are backed up onto Long Lake Road, which would be a severe problem. You've seen it on Woodward with the Starbucks. A lot of these could be alleviated had the, the seemingly flat surfaces near Long Lake Road be considered for some of these, some of these structures. I frankly think it makes sense, because that would be more the backyard of the property where, you know, the house right now is turning its back on the neighborhood, and putting all these in the front yard would be a problem. You know, I have no problem with the, to be fair, I have no problem with the requested fountain, the entry gate to the backyard, and, you know, I support those. I'm not wholeheartedly against it. I look forward to meeting our new neighbors, and I wish them well, but there are some things that, that need to be addressed and seriously considered, and I think the fence is probably the largest one, and maybe if they can consider moving some of these structures closer to the Long Lake Road, as well as that backside of the property, which has an existing drive. I think it even has a street name that has been a question of some debate as to who's the owner of it from this time. So, you know, to say there's a hardship with this property, the design kind of created a lot of this and could have been, again, I'm not an architect, but we could have done something different to maybe allow a lot of us not to be here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, anyone else that'd like to speak? State your name and address and anything new.
Hi, my name's Kai Cooper. I live on 3790 Pemberton Road, which is not far away from this house. There's a few things I want to point out. The reason I bought my house, because of the trees. You know, you see the pictures of the neighborhood. I'm talking about those pine trees, I, I would think they're like at least 30, 40 feet tall, you know, they're really old. And I know the landscapers showed you the pictures, they were talking about replacing them with some 12-feet trees or 20 feet even. It just, you, you can't replace those trees. And for sure, you know, right now, if you go to our neighborhood, they're going to cut a lot of trees. Otherwise, they won't have a room to build that sports, what do you call that, sports court, or the, you know, the gazebos and everything. They have to cut a lot of trees. And I know everybody in this room, especially for this township, care about trees, care about the wild lives, you know, we have hawks, we have eagles, we have everything. And now you're thinking, you cut the trees, you know, to accommodate this country club-like, look-like houses, you know, to me, it's really sad. And I think the neighbor said about the, the curve road on Mystic Valley, right now even dangerous, because I have teenagers, they're driving, you know, I have a lot of neighbor whose kids, soon they're going to drive. If you have a house like this, they're going to park the cars along the road, you know. To me, it's really hazard, you know. I think another thing is that they're talking about the hills, you know, they have to find the flat spot, and if you know this property before, on the top of the, the property is like, like, I think like maybe 2,000-square-feet house, and they purchased the property to cut the hill to accommodate this 19,000-square-feet house. Do you know how much they cut to get a flat spot for the house? And I'm sure they can find some spot on the side along Long Lake Road to find a flat spot for their sports court or gazebos or even pools, you know? Everything right now is in the front yard, right? And I know the last variances you guys approved, I remember Mr. Taylor, you said something, because they're not in sight, but this one, everything is in sight. Every day we drive by, we're going to see it. We're going to see the sports court, we're going to see the gazebo, we're going to see the pool, we're going to see everything. So, I sincerely ask the board to consider to deny it.
Thanks very much.
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Kelly Slank. I live at 3841 Mystic Valley Drive. I live in one of the more modest homes in the neighborhood, so my house is a one-story, which isn't even as tall as the gazebo that's being proposed. I do agree with everyone about changing the look and feel and sound of the neighborhood, which is very precious to me. The only thing that I really have to add to the conversation is that since construction has started, the amount of wildlife, like, on our own property has dramatically increased. You know, when you build walls and fences and tear down trees, it displaces wildlife, it's got to go somewhere. And I think that's the last thing I have to add.
Good evening, my name is Craig Metros. I live at 3841 Mystic Valley Drive. I moved into the neighborhood in 1999. I purchased a, an original James Kahn house. He was a local architect, worked under Serenin's office. The house was pretty bad when I bought it, it was in tear-down condition, but the property and just the, the design of the house, I fell in love with, so I took 10 years and restored the house back to James Kahn's original plans. One thing that has been brought up is I'm, I'm concerned about my property value. When I moved into the house, or the area, 24 years ago, it was all modest 50-style ranches that were sucked back and very secluded. I fell in love with the house, I fell in love with the neighborhood. I, you know, I question, are people going to want to, you know, buy a home that's, that's next to a, a theme park? that's next to a theme park? I've got concerns about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to speak?
Hi, my name is Timothy McLaughlin, and I live at 3791 West Pemberton. What I'm going to talk about more is just the zoning ordinances and variances. It's sound policy to require zoning variances be granted only when a property owner would have unique and unusual hardships created by the physical characteristics of the land. It's also incumbent upon the neighborhoods to do all they can to inspire strict adherence to this unique hardship test. In my opinion, this homeowner has not presented compelling evidence to show that complying with the zoning ordinances as they exist today would present a unique hardship. As such, I believe that these variances should be denied, and that this homeowner should be required to follow both the letter and the spirit of the law, in this case, the Bloomfield Township zoning ordinance. Thank you for your time.
So anyone else I'd like to speak? Thank you for all of your thoughtful comments. I'll close the public hearing and ask the applicant to come back and respond to the comments that have been made, and any questions from the board?
Yeah, my name is Randy Marcell. I'm the lead architect for Gosemane Corporation. And I would like to address some of the things that have been said. I think there's a misunderstanding by the one gentleman that the entryway is off of Mystic Valley and not off of Long Lake. I think that was just misspoken. So I want the board to know that that's the case. So there's no backups on Long Lake or anything else. I think from Long Lake Road going to the driveway, maybe 120 feet, 130 feet into the subdivision, and that would be the entry point. And in one way, this makes the case for the fact that we're not going to have any on-street parking. The owner didn't want any guests parking on the street and then walking up 30-foot incline to get to his home. So that's why we've allowed for good parking on the site. And when we had a meeting with the neighbors at the Marriott Hotel in Bloomfield, I think people looked at the grade lines that are across the driveway and thought that those were all parking spaces. So I would direct folks to really study the plans and write what you have there that you see to the left of the design and what's seen behind you. That's why we cut the sections through. When you see that car down there, and then you see the 30-foot going up to the very top of the property, those trees, one of the reasons our client bought the property is for the home that was up there originally and all the trees that he had. Mr. Simona, my client, he wants to preserve all those trees, and we're going to be supplementing those trees. So I think if you look at, from the road, those views and the trees that we're going to supplement, people mentioned 12-foot trees. We're not going to be putting 12-foot trees in. We're putting 18 to 26-foot trees in there. And they'll just be infills in between the very large and wide trees that are there already that are evergreen. Once again, not deciduous trees. There are some deciduous trees there, but we're not depending on those to block the view of the property. So I believe in what we have proposed, it's really a drive-by that then you don't even know, and you won't know, what's back there. And I would plead with the board to really study and understand because I believe that we're here asking for permissions under the ordinances. You have to ask permission if you do a fire pit that's 18 inches high. So these are things that aren't necessary. We're out, we're entirely in the building envelope. Somebody mentioned something about the fencing, excuse me. The fencing is 40-foot in. We gave an additional five feet. So we're not having a fence at the road. You'll barely see that fence at all. And that's why we pushed it, you know, entirely inside and gave an additional five foot beside the 35-foot setback that is already there. Have I missed anything else? So once again, I would emphasize that the entry point, I've been at the property many, many times. When you come in off of Long Lake, the DeRosier Architect and Orchard Construction sign is right there, and then that driveway is immediately there and goes up to the property. And as such, there's no penetration into the neighborhood. And sad as it may be, I'm working on four projects in Bloomfield Township now. I've worked there. I've been doing what I'm doing for 48 years. I understand the concerns of the people here. But tear downs and rebuilds now have become a major part of my business because the neighborhoods are aging out. People are buying those. I have two projects that are going on on Kirkway right now by Kirk and the Hills Church. So I just emphasized there is change afoot. My client had certain amenities, things that he wanted to do for the relaxation and entertainment of himself and his family. Occasional guests are really not strangers. Anybody that drives into a subdivision is a stranger, so to speak. But these are not people that are going to be going deep into the sub. They're really 120 feet in and up his driveway and on his property. So I hope I've addressed a couple of those. If you can remind me of some that you have questions on, I'd be happy to address those.
So I had a couple. There was a comment about, I guess, the flat area towards Long Lake Road. So is that, is that area a potential location for any of the structures? Or what was, what's the reason that that?
That area slopes down severely.
So there's a grade?
Yes, and it just becomes a flat area there. Obviously, with the traffic on Long Lake for a pool or any other amenities and have quiet enjoyment of your property, that's not going to be the location for it. And it's a nice buffer, we thought, between the home and the Long Lake Road.
And there were some comments on water runoff and flooding?
I've got the builder here. Tom, do you want to come up?
My name is Tom Shifu with Orchard Development. Pertaining to water runoffs, there's currently soil erosion measures and a permit with Oakland County. So there's double silt fence installed around the perimeter. And there's also a grass barrier between the road, a significant amount between the road and where the soil erosion control measures are. Also, we conduct a weekly cleaning where the, we call them the silt sacks go, where the storm drains go. Most of this runoff, once the property stabilized and sodded, is going to be controlled. In addition to that, there's going to be yard drains throughout for additional control as well. So I'm not aware of any runoffs. We do take care of the site, and we communicate with Oakland County periodically with the Water Resource Commission as well.
And then just so everybody in the audience is clear, could you take with the pointer and show where the four-foot-high aluminum fence is going? Because I've got it's on the northwesterly lot line, the northeasterly lot line.
It would run along Pemberton, Mystic Valley, tie into the entry. And then this would be, this is the proposed masonry wall that'd run along Long Lake and tie into the entry at Mystic Valley. So aluminum fence here, and masonry fence along here.
And is there any screening on the other side of that fence, or is all the screening?
Yes, from the road.
Okay.
From the road, there'll be screening on that fence. And that's why we took the additional, the 35-foot setback, we have to be away from the road.
Yep.
But we went another five so that we could enclose the fence with plantings.
Could you go back to the previous slide? Could you mind just pointing out the front of the home? I just want to make sure I'm... So that's the front. Okay, so then where all of these amenities are, is in the rear of how?
To the rear of the home. That's correct. The previous home that was raised, the previous home that was raised, and this is the architect Lou DeRosier, who took it from ground zero, but the previous home faced that wall that runs along Chase Manhattan Bank, which is on that corner. And this is what faced the masonry wall that exists there.
Let me just, hi, Lou DeRosier, architect. Pleasure to be here and see all of you again. This is the original house, the first day I saw it, actually. It's one of my pictures. And that house is probably about 3,000 feet, but that's irrelevant. It sat on the top of the hill, but the new house sits exactly where that house used to be. Exactly. And that house, that was the front door right there, and of course, the backyard was out the back. So I think that'd been there about 50 years, that home.
And the position of the front of the home is the same, the previous?
Exact front of the home is the same view that we have. We put a new home in the exact location as the other.
And so I haven't, you know, walked the property, but one of the comments was about, you know, the need to cut down, you know, 45 or 50-foot trees in order to locate some of the structures. Is that? I mean, we have a tree ordinance, and we have to tag trees and do that. So is that, could you speak to that? Is that happening in order to locate any of the things?
Did you have a tree survey?
Because we're very familiar with the tree ordinance.
Yeah. Tom Shifu, again, yes, there's, so there's a tree permit issued on this property. But the team actually is putting back more calipers than were removed, significantly more based on the landscape plan being proposed. So I was pleased that the team was not only able to accomplish that, but accomplish additional calipers going back on this property in order to provide the screening and the replacement if what was cut before. Like Randy mentioned, owner does admire one of the main features about this property was the significant amount of trees on this property, mature trees, I should say. And whatever was cut is going to get replaced above and beyond the number or counts, the calipers that were counted for on the permit. And once the project's done, we're going to conduct that and then show that the additional calipers being replanted will far exceed what was originally submitted and permitted.
Many of the trees, especially the large trees, are located outside of the property line.
Well, that's what it looks like from the picture.
Yeah, so between Mystic Valley and Pemberton, many of those trees are located in between the road and the property line. So there are some trees, some that are succumbing to some wilt and some issues. But any of those trees that would be lost, I mean, not only would it come out, we're going to replace.
You're complying with the tree ordinance?
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, and we were, this plan doesn't show because it would cover the whole lot. I mean, the amount of trees on the property is still significant. And if I could speak to one other thing is, you know, we're doing our best to address screening of the amenities. And we, I mean, we're conscious of it. We want it to blend into the community. But, I mean, nowhere is there a place where you have to screen your house completely so that no one can see your home. I mean, that would set a bad precedent if we were going to have to screen a home that's no one wanted to see.
Right. What our ordinance requires is screening of the accessory structures.
Exactly, and that's what we're-
That's what, you know, we're trying to, you know, explain to the public is-
Yes, and I think, I think we're trying to go above and beyond that.
What you're saying is you're going to go-
That's the owner's wishes, you know. I wouldn't want to say he doesn't want to see them. That's not the point, but he wants-
He wants his privacy.
He wants his privacy. There you go.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Well, I'm just wondering with, you know, we heard comments about how elevated the site is. So even with all the evergreens and the additional plantings, are people going to be able to see these accessory structures?
Absolutely not. I'm sorry. Absolutely not. I'm used to having a big mouth, and I can project, so don't always go to the mic. But no, you will not. That's why it's very essential for you to study these cross-sections. You can see all the elevation changes right up to the walkout of the lower level of the home, and you can see how far down it is, and then how the evergreen placement will obscure all of that. You won't be able to see it. If you're in an automobile and you're trying to look at, you're just not going to see that because there's going to be a contiguous evergreen wall. Will you be able to see the top of the house or the second story of the house? For sure. There's no doubt. But will you see those accessory structures that we're addressing? You will not be able to see those.
Well, that's the requirement.
That's the intent, right.
That's the requirement, so.
Right.
Any other questions from the board?
Actually, I had one other question. So the fencing that's going to be around it, the proposed plantings, those will be on the outside so that the fence cannot be seen from the street?
There's plantings along the fence, and then we're taking advantage also of the, the challenge was the topography of the property. The further we move the fence in, the less and less, you know, land the homeowner has. So we added some additional shrub plantings, as I mentioned. And then we're also taking advantage of the existing screening that runs along the Mystic Valley and Pembroke and Long Lake that will end up screening that fence. You can see in this cross-section from the, this is the Pemberton side, the fence is located, oh shoot, I'm sorry. Here's, this is the fence right here.
So you will have trees on the outside of the fence?
There's trees, there's existing trees on the outside, yeah.
Any further discussion of the board? Any other questions? So this would be where we'd have a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm, my problem is I'm struggling with the entire concept. When Colonel George built his house, or James Cousins built his, or Mr. Briggs built his on Walbury, or Polk on Loser, Saunders on Loser, as well.
Yeah, I can't hear any of that.
My apologies. I'm not near the microphone. I'm struggling with the concept. When Colonel George built his house on Long Lake, and James Cousins built his, and Mr. Briggs built his, they all had massive homes. There's no question about it. But they sat on massive pieces of property. And as much as I think the applicant has done an exceptional job in mitigating the visual impact that this prop, this development, this house would have on this area, I'm struggling with the fact that it's all on four acres, which, when it's surrounded by road and other homes, is not a large piece of property. It seems like a large piece of property. If you had to cut it, it would be a large piece of property. Be assured, I've had a large lot. But this, this, for the size of the home and the amenities that are going on it is overpowering to the neighborhood. And so for me, as much as I think Randy's done a great job with his landscaping and Mr. DeRosier and his architectural work, I'm just struggling with this. So I'm going to let somebody else proceed. This, if somebody came into my subdivision and bought up several dozen houses, which they'd have to do to get to an appropriately-sized piece of acreage, it would change the character of my community. And that's where my struggle is. So I'm just sharing that with my board members so you know where I'm, what I'm thinking on this.
I'll just add a-
I would direct you to, just to remind everyone, there were three lots here that were combined. So the impact, just for your consideration, could have been-
I'm well aware. I'm familiar with one that combined seven to create 13 acres, so I'm familiar.
Okay.
Well, I'm kind of struggling as well, kind of on the same line, which is because it has multiple frontages. And that's why I had you, again, make sure I understood exactly where the front of the home was and the impact that it will have, especially on Mystic Valley, with all of those amenities, which I see is still in the rear of the home. However, it is on a frontage in a way. And that's probably, from my understanding, the most serene part of the three frontages or roads. And that one happens to be a drive, and I know that was a comment around that. And all of these types of amenities on that part of the property. That's what I'm struggling with. And I understand exactly if I were in the home and I was the homeowner, that's the most serene part of it, and that's where you want, if you're spending all your time outdoors, enjoying all of those entertainment features, that'd probably be, as an owner, where I would want them. But also, just thinking about that impact of all of that types of structures is the part that I'm struggling with on that part of the property. So that's just my, those are my thoughts.
Okay, so if, you know, if the sort of volume of structures is the issue, if you go down through the list, you know, these are all things that, in different situations, we- we may have approved, you know, by themselves or in connection with others. Right, a pool, a sports court, you know, a gazebo. So I think we have to give some guidance here as to what's acceptable. Because to certainly make a blanket that it's too much isn't helpful. Right? So I think we have to maybe give more guidance then as to what, what, what would work.
We felt that too. We were directed to put everything that we desired there. And it makes that list, you know, so it seems overruled. Taken, just like the client, or not the client, but the person before us, you know, they had a sport court. It was approved on an isolated basis. Here, we put everything out forward because we have a, a master plan.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know what the board.
Showing all your cards, which is helpful.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's all out there.
I'll say the cum, if you do it one at a time, that isn't always a good.
No.
Why didn't you do it all at once? So, so this is the better way to do it. So what I'm, what I'm saying to the board is we, we need to, you know, either, you know, make a request and, and, and sort of give some guidelines, go back and rework it. Because I'll, I'll just point that out, is there are, you know, those, those things, other than maybe the lazy river, are, are things that we have seen in other settings.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with the, the types of accessory structures, or as well, even the, the amount or the volume. I was just thinking of where they're located. And I know it's a, a unique thing, but where they're all located, that was more of my concerns, or at least thoughts around that. You know, I think a house that size, I know we've seen a lot of these types of structures, accessory structures, entertainment features. We've seen a lot of these, all on one property. So I know that's not unique.
So do we have a motion to, for, or some guidance, to, you know, go back and do additional work according to the following? What would you like to see? Because I can't make a motion.
No, I, I know. I'm, I'm at a loss. I, this is, this is like driving down Adams Castle Drive to see Adams Castle. I drove probably eight miles from my house to go see it. I would think that this is going to be similar. It's, it's, it's just what you did. Oh, you got to see this house. This will be better landscaped. But nonetheless, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling.
This is just overwhelming in scale.
Yeah. And, but if, if, if this was at the center of, of eight more acres, I'd, I'd feel better about it. But it's, it's in, it's not.
If, if I could interject, a couple of things. One thing, you know, we, we had a meeting of the neighbors. And unfortunately, that was probably the biggest snow we had all year. So it was, only a few were able to come out at that time. There's no homeowners' association to reach out to. So I had to individually try to reach out to every neighbor. You know, neighbors, the neighbors that did come gave their input, which we appreciated. We've heard more tonight. You see the scale of the project and some of the challenges that we had to deal with. But I think at this point, we'd like to postpone it, take all the input that we've gotten from the public and from you, and any additional guidance you may have, and bring it back to you. And maybe, maybe a more succinct package that we can then address.
Yeah. And I would suggest trying to meet with the neighbors. Because for me personally, I mean, okay, I understand the scale and they're overwhelmed. But okay, it is four acres. It's within, you know, everything is going to be screened. But you have a neighborhood with 20 houses and you have half of the neighborhood.
Right.
Opposed to it. So, I mean, that's.
And there is, there is a practical difficulty. I mean.
Absolutely.
There's, there's, there's three front yards. I mean, in theory, there's no backyard.
That's great.
Yeah. So it's, I, I, I understand, I understand the difficulty of developing the property.
And I'll just say, those comments where there was sort of, everything is unacceptable, doesn't seem like a fair comment to me. Because those, you know, individual things, if you came and just asked for a sports court, probably wouldn't, you know, maybe, maybe there'd be some opposition to the, to the, you know, location of it. But you could, you know, mitigate that with screening or whatever. But it's that, plus the lazy river, plus the gazebo. So I do think then you end up with comments that it's, you know, it's like a hotel or a fortress or that. So that, that sort of impact certainly came through with the public comments. And anything that you could do to sort of allay those concerns. Because it does seem to me that if, if you had a tree that was tall enough and it was planted in the proper location, you could screed it, which is what the ordinance requires.
And I just would like to direct, I'm sure you know, there were five letters of people.
Yep.
In the sub who agreed with it, didn't have objection to it.
Yep.
That doesn't overrule the comments. But I would.
Take everything into, it's not a matter of ruling. We're, we're trying to give.
Yes.
Balance, we're, we're doing the balancing here in order to make an exception. Our job is to make an exception where appropriate, if there's a hardship.
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate for me, considering the suggestion from the podium, that we have motioned to postpone this?
Sure. Because you already, I guess you've already withdrawn it, as what you might say, you want to go back and, which is probably the best thing you could do from our perspective. So we very much appreciate that.
If we, if we do go back, I would appreciate if the board could give us some direction that's going to make this all more palatable in terms of whatever changes that you would like to see. Because otherwise, I'd go back kind of blind, not knowing what I'm supposed to do.
Talk to the neighbors.
Well, we've, we've met with the neighbors.
I'm not sure I'd, yeah, I'm, and.
Right. So I guess what I'd, I'd say is, is the lazy river, you know, with, with the rock scape, it seems to, the location of the sports court seems to have drawn a lot of attention. And then I would say the, the height of the gazebo are three things that sort of stood out to me as being fairly significant impact. And maybe you can, you know, with the other things that are there. But because the sports court is, is, is close to people on the other side.
So thank you. When we come back, first of all, it's important that we make sure we're on the next agenda. We don't want to miss an agenda. And we'll get our changes done before then. But I would like to address the gazebo for a minute. Because when I designed the gazebo, it's connected to the house.
Right.
And it has a, it's an extension of a deck. It's 30 feet. It's a big part of the house.
Yep.
And therefore, it comes under the, the house regulations, which I followed. So it's, it's within the structure. If you look at the gazebo and the house, it's the same structure.
Yep.
That's what's supposed to.
All I'm saying is, if you're just talking about a, a reaction to the, to the impact and the comments that we got, those are the things that sort of stood out in my mind. And I'm not saying you can't have a gazebo, but maybe there's something else that.
So if we make some modifications, and we come back, well, should we take one at a time and do it that way? How do you want to do it when we come back? The whole, the whole thing at once? But I mean, as you say, okay, we're going to talk about the gazebo. We're going to talk about.
Based on your, based, excuse me.
Sure.
Based on the comments, you might want to bundle them. I think you've got some that aren't going to be a problem.
Okay.
And you've got some that, that may or may not be. I, it's, it's, it's just a lot.
Well, we'll see if we can tone it down and bundle it.
And, and again, I'm, I'm going to use, you know, some of the other properties I mentioned don't quite apply. But Adams Castle is probably the one that continues to draw my attention to it. It's, it's that ostentatious thing at the end of the drive. And, and it's, it's what everybody goes to see. And the people living on the street are just kind of there to watch the tourists go by. And I don't think that's what, I don't think that's what your owner intends. And I don't think that's what, what the neighborhood wants. So trying to figure out some way of dealing with that. Lou, I know you're, I know you're a miracle worker. So I know, and.
I get that all the time, yeah.
And I've, I've watched Randy's, I've, I've seen Randy's stuff in the township. And I've, you used to live in Sterling Heights.
Yes, I did.
You and I used to live about a half a mile from each other. That's how far back you and I go. I lived on Ryan.
I had a borrowed rake and a shovel back then.
Yeah, yeah. I remember when you were starting. But anyway, it's, it's, you've got a great, you've got a great group of people. I'm sure you'll figure something out. And you've got a unique parcel. I'll give you that. I'm just, I'm, I'm just a bit stunned.
Just out of curiosity, wasn't Adams Castle, they owned all the land out to Adams?
Mm-hmm.
And then they sold it off? So they, all those homes.
Oh, yeah.
Got built. And then when you go back, it was there all by.
See, all those homes, all those homes followed. But this is, but this is the reverse. It's like, it's like Colonel George's house. Now it's a church. All right? But nobody even, most people don't even know that it's his house.
This is different than, than the Adams Castle might be.
I understand.
That's okay.
Yep. I agree with that.
Okay.
So we'll make a motion to postpone for the next.
To the next.
Whatever.
I can't imagine it'd be on the next agenda.
Sure. Whenever we can get notice in properly.
Yes, please. We need revisions.
So motion. That's my motion.
Okay, support.
Motion to postpone. And, and the township will figure out when they can get it on the next agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess.
So I have a motion to postpone.
Can I say one thing before you take that? If we could have the township's consideration, we've been in a holding pattern since spring, submitting, resubmitting.
By Monday.
Being postponed, postponed. And I don't want to say time is money, but we're at that point where there's economic damage to the owner. He wants to be in his home in two years. And there's a lot for us to do. So I just want that to be part of the consideration, if it can happen. Because we have been delayed, we made subsequent modifications to our submittal as each thing was raised, each issue was raised. And here we are, and it's spring.
So, anyway, we've got a motion to postpone.
Yep. We have a motion to postpone. Is there a second, second? All those in favor in motion postpone, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're postponed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 1, 6130 Surrey.
Oh, man.
That's a record. So you can state with your name and address and summarize why you need a variance.
Good evening. Bonnie Olds, address is 6130 West Surrey Road. And I'm. Turn this down a little bit. I feel like I'm hearing too much. Thanks. I'm shrinking too. My husband and I are here to, seeking approval for the back, our back patio that we just recently cleared of all of the overgrowth that has been plaguing our neighborhood and neighbors for several years. And this was the structure that was put in place. There was already some structure there. The walkway that leads down from the driveway to the back underneath the deck was already established. There you go. And then there's a walkway to the back of the house that was already established. And there was some, some semblance of a structure prior to the patio. But the additional structure is in the back that we're, we're looking for approval from the board members today.
Any questions from the board? Open this up to the public. Anyone like to speak on it? Close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion. In regard to the appeal at West, 6130 West Surrey Road, for the accessory structure, structures, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section 42 dash 7.6 standards because this accessory structure is in harmony of the neighborhood. And it's in a position that does not involve any setbacks or encroachments.
Support. My motion in support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your question is granted.
Thank you so much.
Calling item 2, 4732 Walnut Lake Road.
Nobody here for Walnut Lake Road?
Anyone here for item 2?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move, I'm going to motion that we move this to the end of the agenda.
Support.
Well, I guess I.
You want to just go forward?
Yeah, I guess I would say, since this is a generator that's just located in the easterly side yard.
Oh, somebody's.
Are you here for item 2?
Item 3.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't know that, I think we could have Patty present it.
Well, just, just as stated, you know, so we have an AC unit that is proposed on the easterly side yard. It doesn't comply with the 16-foot setback. It's actually encroaching nine feet into that 16. But they do intend to screen it with evergreen screening. See that from the, the view from the rear.
Location right here.
Okay. So it'll be screened.
So should there be any additional or supplemental, that would be part of the motion then?
Okay. And that's pretty, that house is pretty tight to the lot line, isn't it?
Pretty straightforward. So I'll open this up to the public. Anyone like to comment?
What's the driveway?
Close the public. Bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request at 4732 for a dimension, Walnut Lake Road, my apologies, for a dimensional variance, I'm going to move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. In fact, it actually appears that if they complied, the generator would have to be inside the house. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. It will be fully screened. Unique circumstances of the property are, again, the location of the house and the setbacks where the home currently is, which certainly is not something that was self-created. So with that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. And the additional evergreen screening that was shown will, is, is required.
Support. Motion in support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Calling item 3, 4390 Chisholm Trail.
Holly Nguyen-Dyke. I am the beekeeper, seeking reapproval of my hive. So right now it's just one hive. I had requested approval for two in case my hive needed to, needed a second home. But that's not the case.
Okay. So you're just asking for one?
Yeah, it's just one.
And you've had, just to bring her up to speed, you have had the hive for a year. You came in and we put a time limit on it.
Correct.
To see how it worked out.
Yep. And so I've gotten a lot of positive feedback. I don't know if the homeowners' association is here or not.
But we'll find out.
But they were notified. And like I said, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback. Pretty much all of my neighbors have been periodically stopping by and asking how the bees are doing. So it's been kind of fun. People are excited for this year, see how they do.
Okay.
Looking for honey.
I'm thinking so many.
Quite the difference from a year ago.
Yes. People are buzzing by to check.
They're buzzing by, exactly. So maybe this year I'll be able to do some extracting.
Yeah. All right. So I'll open this to the public. Anyone that'd like to comment on the beehives? Close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board. Wait a minute. Would you like to speak?
Would you allow two for them?
What's that?
Could you allow two?
Can I, can I have two? Because sometimes they get bigger and they need to be split. But that would be for next year.
Unfortunately, it wasn't noticed for two.
It wasn't noticed. You'd have to wait.
It was approval for two existing.
Yeah.
Oh, it was two, okay.
It was approved initially for two in case I needed to split the hive. But see, as a hobbyist, I don't want to go beyond two hives. So if I got beyond two hives, I would be giving bees away.
How do you do that? I don't want to know.
You put them in a box and you put them in a car.
Just to be, just to be clear, we approved two. You only used one. And you may add a second now because it's worked out so well.
Okay.
Exactly.
You know, everyone's.
So we'll leave it at two.
Behaved and everything's.
Behaved.
Okay.
They behaved in the bee hive.
They behaved in bee hives. Okay.
If we're ready, I'll make a motion for this.
Yes, I think we are.
Okay. At 4390 Chisholm Trail, for the two bee hives, I'm going to move that it be approved as requested. With regard to the permission request, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section 42 dash 7.6 standards because the location of these bee hives do not hinder or discourage the adjacent properties due to the fact of their location on your property. And with regard to the dimensional variance, I also move that that be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Because of the, the large lot that she has there, there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that nobody is nearby those and they are screened by some trees. The unique circumstances. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given the lot size and the location of the beehives, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. And I'll just add that all necessary permits should be made within one year and should be obtained prior to installation. Support.
My motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Glad nobody got stung.
So, be.
I didn't get stung.
So, be good.
I was digging around in there, so.
Be good.
Be good.
No, it sounds like it was approved.
It was approved. Awesome, thank you.
Keep your neighbors happy.
Item 4, 6455 Gulfview.
Another generator?
No, this is a, yeah, it's encroaching six feet, so same thing.
Another generator. Patty, you're on.
So, we have a generator located in the southerly side yard, encroaching 16 feet into the required 16, six feet into the required 16-foot side yard setback. Very similar to the previous appeal. The applicant is intending to screen with vegetation and, you know, should there be any enhancements of the screening, that could be part of your motion.
Okay, so I'll open this as a public hearing, anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion.
Great.
In regards to the appeal at 6455 Gulfview Drive, for a generator encroaching in the southern side yard setback, I move that the variance be approved as requested, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards of practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Because of the size of the lot, this is probably the only place to put one. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it will be screened, and that will also be part of the motion. Unique circumstances of the property, again, the existing floor plan of the home has access limitation, not access limitations, but limitations for such a generator, and because of that, it's not self-created. With that, if approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And additional evergreens may be required to screen the unit from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Support. Motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's calling item 5, 1914 Long Lake Shore Drive.
Good evening. My name is Mike Seeloff. I'm here on behalf of our homeowner, Afif Hakani, looking to basically get approval to put an AC condenser within our side yard setback.
Okay. Thanks very much. Any questions from the board?
Need for the side yard? What's the need to put it in the side yard?
The house is right on that 16-foot side yard setback, and we need room for our AC condenser.
Why not in the rear yard?
Well, that would be, that's a lakeside, and I don't believe we are permitted to do that.
Any other questions? Open up to the public, anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion for this. With regard to the appeal at 1914 Long Lake Shore Drive for the dimensional variance, I move that it be approved as requested, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the lot being on the lakeside in the back. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it's going to be screened by evergreens. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, given its location on the lake, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. All necessary permits have to be made within one year and should be obtained prior to construction, and the unit will have to be screened with evergreens that have to meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Thank you. Calling item 6, 1250 Marymar Lane.
Hello, I'm Stephen Bonneman with Crater Brick for 1250 Marymar. The owners came to Crater Brick to redesign their backyard. They had previously installed a spa seven years ago, and it is currently located in the rear yard. We are relocating it. It will be immediately adjacent to a covered structure for easy access. The backyard is unique, that it slopes up away from the house, and existing vegetation is there, and we are also planting additional plantings to fully shield from view. I can answer any questions.
Can you show us where those plantings are going? You know, back to the, to the point.
Evergreen hedge along the backside there, and then they're going to have additional boxwood hedge, and there's another layer of hydrangeas toward the north side. And the backyard slopes up, it's pretty dense, evergreens there. The house behind probably sits looking down on the top of the roof, so that will be pretty well-screened.
Okay, any other questions? Open this up to the public, anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I can make a motion.
Great. Thank you.
In regard to the appeal at 1250 Marymar Lane, for the accessory structure hot tub, I move the request be approved, is submitted, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the space that the hot tub is going to go meets the setback requirements and will not, will be in harmony with the rear yard and the harmony of the neighborhood. The application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the hot tub from public view all 12 months.
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling next item, item 7, 1190 Edison.
Hi, I'm Christopher Ozdarsky at 1190 Edison, and I'm here to talk about three pieces. The first piece is an addition on the back of the house, where a deck currently is, but we're going to make an addition to the house. That's going to be a screened-in porch. Because of the angle of the road, Lafayette, we encroach into the, wherever we're supposed to get, we get too close to the road or too close to the property line, so we're looking for a variance for that. The second item is a fence. That's the front of the house and the side of the house. Want to show the side of the house? It was the, go back to the first picture. Right there, the picture on the right is the side of the house. So, where that deck is now is where the addition's going to go. And then next to that is a four-foot fence, privacy fence, wood privacy fence. We're looking to replace that with a four-foot metal fence, like a black aluminum fence that would be like around a pool. We just think that would look nicer for the neighborhood than the wood fence that's there now. And then the third item is a shed on the back part of the property. If you want to show the map of the, survey, yeah, thanks. As part of this process of doing the addition, we acquired the property behind us, so now we have a puzzle piece shape, and we want to put a shed on the vacant lot behind us. Setback from the road, 18 feet, and it doesn't neighbor any property, there's nobody on any side other than us because there's woods to the northwest, the northeast, and then across the road, it's basically looking at somebody's garage that is in the back of their house. And it's a wooded lot. The shed, the shed would be like a house wood structure type thing, not like a prefab shed that are common in our neighborhood, that the metal sheds that you get at Home Depot or whatever, it would be more of a structure, like a small room with a roof, like a house would have. And painted similarly to the house. There was something else that, oh, the, going back to the fence, common throughout the neighborhood are chain link fences. We could do a chain link fence, but we just thought the black metal fence would look better.
This is a single. Okay. Take care.
Okay. Chain link fence is not good, so.
Changing the fence is what?
No, no, a chain link fence is not as desirable as what you suggested.
I guess I'm just saying that compared to the, most of the neighborhood.
So, there's a couple of their houses there, is that shed going to be screened from view? Because it looked like the trees that were there were not evergreen trees, so it looked like you could.
It's a, it's a old wooded lot, yeah. They're not evergreen trees, but none of the neighbors can see in there, really.
So, you don't plan to add any screening for the shed?
We were thinking about, there are some shrubs next to the one spot where we found a spot that we could carve out to put the pad between trees, and there's one area that's got some shrubs that are about this tall, but they're, they're not attractive at all, they're not evergreens. We were going to try and replace that with something. I think they're called rhododendrons. We've seen them grow well in heavily shaded areas.
So, we did get a comment from a neighbor about seeing lots of sheds, and that changes the nature of our township. So, typically, we do require evergreen screening. Is that something you'd be willing to do?
It would be really hard to do it. There was a, not an evergreen, it was more like a pine tree, and it died back there. I mean, it's, there's no shade, there's, it's heavily shaded, so I don't know how well it would, and like I said, it's not something that can be seen really from any of the neighbors.
Well, I guess one neighbor feels differently.
Yeah. Well, the problem would, if you come in off of Lafayette, whether the.
If you come in off of Lafayette, you would see it along the road through the trees.
But it's public view, it's.
Public view.
It's public view, not neighbor view.
Right. Public view from, yes, from the road, yes. What, there are trees along the road blocking the view. Not evergreen, right now, you can kind of see through the trees.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, from the pictures.
Yes.
It's like you would, so the requirement's got to be screened, you know, 12 months out of the year, so that's, that's why the evergreens are important.
I guess I didn't realize, I mean, there's so many sheds in the neighborhood that aren't screened, I just, I didn't realize that was an issue.
Well, we're just considering this request for this shed, so we, so why don't we, I'm going to open this up to the public, anyone like to comment? Okay, I'll close it and bring it back to the board. Any other questions or? Because typically, the requirement is, if we approve a shed, it's got to be screened from public view 12 months out of the year. So, that seems like it's giving you some.
It's, it's kind of high.
Yeah.
How would you, how would you screen that?
With a high.
With tall.
Evergreens.
High evergreens.
Arborvitae.
With, with tall.
Okay.
Tall.
I guess you could try and grow them back there. I mean, we could try and plant a couple back there, but I don't know how well they would do in the, it's heavily shaded.
Even if you put them along, along the road out from under the deciduous trees, it's going to block it. The evergreen screening doesn't have to be tight to the building, it can be tight, it could be on the road, which.
We could, I guess if we did it.
It looks like the tree canopy doesn't.
If we did it inside the chain link fence, so the road, small area, chain link fence, and then the arborvitae.
Yeah, we don't tell you where to place.
And we would only need a couple of them because the shed's not there.
Well, it's got to be screened from public view, so.
From every angle?
Every angle, that's public view.
I guess I would consider it, I don't know how practical it is to do.
It's a requirement.
Yeah. I guess I just wonder, okay.
Dr. Randy.
So, no shed.
We didn't necessarily say that.
No, no, we just said, that's a condition of the, of the approval, so that's what the ordinance requires. Right, well, you just, you, you sat through a lengthy presentation about screening and structure and stuff, so that's what the requirement is. So, I, but I can see the worry on your face, you're worried.
I'm trying to figure out how I would even be able to do it, is what I'm concerned about.
So, you want to think about it, or you want to come back, or? We could do the other ones. I mean, we need a commitment.
Along the fence line? We can do them along the fence line, yeah. We can put some, we can put some shrubs in.
Thank you. All right.
Okay. So, it's going to be in the condition.
Yeah.
Just so you know, you got to meet the condition.
Yeah.
Okay.
You, go ahead.
I think you agreed to the condition.
All right. Okay, so I'll make a motion then. I'll start with the permission request first in regards to the appeal at 1190 Edison Avenue for the proposed shed. I move that the request be approved, as submitted, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood, as, you know, sheds are something that we see very often. And because the applicant had agreed to the screening, the accessory structure will be harmonious as well, and it will be screened. For the dimension, no variance, I'm going to go to that next. I also, in regard to the appeal at 1190 Edison Avenue, I also move that the variance be approved as requested, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the unique shape of the lot. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it will be screened 12 months out of the year. The unique circumstances of the property, again, it has multiple frontages, and so that makes it unique, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that, if approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. And again, I just want to reiterate that additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the fence and shed from public view.
The fence, there's no, there's no screening for the fence?
The fence wasn't.
The existing fence?
The fence wasn't the issue.
The first, oh, no, I guess I'm just talking about the.
You're only talking about the shed.
Screening for the, for the.
For the shed.
For the shed.
Yes, my apologies.
About the fence.
So, so, evergreen screenings for this shed.
Correct.
So that it can be screened from public view, just want to make sure.
We have support?
Yes.
Okay. So, I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted, and happy planting.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8, 4345 Willoway.
Hi, I'm Gina Wolchager at 4345 South Willoway Estates Court, seeking approval for existing sports court and shed and surrounding fence. So, the shed is, as you can see, the shed is right there, right next to the house. The short, the.
Sports court?
That's, yeah, it, I mean, it's asphalt structure, but yeah, it's a, yeah, it's, it's a piece of, so originally, what happened was, we put a hockey rink, we live on a, on a sloped yard, about 20, 20 feet from the top of the backyard to the bottom of it, there's only one flat part of my, my rear yard, and we put a hockey rink in one winter. When, when we took the hockey rink down, those are, those are, you know, they, they don't stay up, those are temporary structures or whatever, when you take it down, we decided to do some landscaping, and we put in a asphalt pad, and I, I realized that that was not part of procedure, and I'm apologizing for, for doing that without getting approval first, but that is, that is what we, what we did. So, yes, so that's kind of the story. The shed was in the original submission. I submitted it, and it does say, right here, it says, sport court surrounding fence and shed.
Okay. So, it's going to be addressed a little later.
So, what, tell us about the fence that's going around.
So, the, so, the issue, so if you can go back to, go back rear, so my whole rear yard, we planted all 47 of those arborvitae's. We have probably 11 giant oak trees in our rear yard, so. We have probably 11 giant oak trees in our rear yard, so we appreciate the trees, the shade, we tried, you know, we've landscaped it, you know, what we, we think is, is very nicely, um, we maintain our yard very well. The issue is, is putting an evergreen on that south side, um, and my neighbor is here, on her side of, of the yard because of the shade. So, it slopes down, I, I certainly can try it, my fear is that I'm just gonna replace it, and we've had to replace a bunch of those arb's, and I think I've got them to the spot where they're about five, six years old, now they're good. It, it's gonna be an issue, 'cause we've planted some things on this, this hill, 'cause it's, she's, she's, her elevation is even lower than, than our, than our house. The proposal would be to put in a, some sort of shielding fence, I can plant ivy along it, I understand the evergreen, I can do evergreens on this side from the, from the street view, I just can't do it on her side yard. And we've talked, um, you know, truth be told, we didn't have the greatest relationship of going, you know, from, from this point, but we've, we've talked, we've talked about a plan. I wanna make her happy, that's, that's why I'm, I'm here, to work with her and, and make this right, um, and so I'm willing to do whatever, you know, she wants to do, whatever the board approves, to make this, to make this right. She doesn't, she doesn't have an issue with the court, she just wants more plantings and screening, and that's what I'm trying to kinda solve for.
Okay.
But I'm trying to, so I'm looking at the picture of your fence.
So this doesn't exist, so the court exists without a fence right now?
Right.
We just have a, we, I, it's a temporary, yeah, and it, that was a solution, 'cause I didn't wanna put it, obviously, put a fence in without approval, yeah.
What I'm saying is typically, so there are sort of, uh, screening nets that could even go up and down, as opposed to, it's kind of a hardscape fence that you've got, that's eight feet?
That, yeah, I, I don't have anything permanent right now. Right now, I just have temporary poles with...
What do you want, are you proposing something permanent?
I'm proposing something permanent, just, but, I mean, I, I could just go...
But you're opening suggestions from the board?
I'm open for, to suggestions, I wanna make everybody happy, I wanna obviously get this approved, but if, if a permanent structure's approved, and then I can plant ivy or do, like, and make it more, you know, more cohesive and, and try to provide that kind of like more evergreen screen, that's what I'm, that's what I'm...
We, we appreciate your openness to suggestions.
Yes.
That's a really valued mindset here, so thank you.
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
Andrea, you said we have, we can't do it this time?
Not for the shed.
Oh, not for the shed, okay.
So I'll have to come back for the shed. The shed is right next to the house, we actually painted it the same color.
It's an entertaining night out coming into the meetings.
This is great, I have three kids, yeah, this was a long one tonight, too.
All right, so let's open this to the public, anyone like to comment? There we go.
I would like...
So wait a minute, just come up to the, uh, just give us your name and address, and...
Sorry, let me grab my stuff.
I'd like to, the approval to be postponed until, um, evergreens or a fence is in place, so that, um, then I have some pictures that are pretty sad of my view from, the view from my house, and, uh, I'm not sure if you can see that.
Did we get your name and address, please, for the record?
Krina Anakam at 4359 South Willoway. And I can, I have a PowerPoint, but... So, uh, this is the shed, it's on the side of the house, I'm not sure that...
So we're not, unfortunately, we're not talking about the shed, we're gonna have to come back for that.
Okay.
Okay, but it's gonna be planting and run off shed, too, before we go back.
Yeah, well, it's on the side.
Proactive plantings.
That is how the court looks at this point, so it has that... I know. It has that white, um...
Got the boards up.
Around, and then it has lights, and it has a bench. It's not pretty, it's not pretty. And I realize that when my neighbors took out the vegetation between our, uh, side yards, um, there are a lot of roots left there, so to put new plantings, that might be a little bit difficult, which is why I would be open to a privacy fence. But if the privacy fence is not acceptable to you or to them, then I would insist on bringing in some soil and, or some dirt, planting a little bit higher, so that they don't have to go into those roots. That is one, so privacy is one. It, it would help with noise and, and views. Uh, the second is when, uh, when, um, this part was actually dug out and some soil was brought, um, moved from place to place to create this larger, flat space, um, their drain from the house was taken out, it was draining in the backyard, and a drain tile was taken out, and now it's right in front of my, uh, of my garage. So it floods my garage, and, uh, I asked the neighbors to, um, to move it and put in, I don't know, French drain or some other sort of a, a drain to, um...
I thought we were talking about sports court.
Like, this is the kinda stuff that I'm getting, and you don't see there, but the water is actually, um, sprouting up. So, that is... This is another view, this is in my backyard, um, because a lot of, um, the slope was changed in several, um, construction projects that they had.
So we're just talking about the sports court tonight?
Yeah, well, it's, the sports court was also, uh, when, when the cement was added, a lot of stone was added all around.
Okay.
So that, um, makes the water go in different ways, and it's a big slope, so this is what happens to, to my path, and that is the entrance to my back, uh, to my basement. So you can see it's all water there, and that didn't happen before this was happening. So I'd like the runoff to be, um, some sort of leveling to be done, grading for the runoff, so that it's pushed towards the back of the yard. So I have two requests at this point, as, um, we're not talking about the shed, and that is for this to be, the approval to be postponed until I see the drainage runoff and, uh, the, solved, and then the fence, the, the visibility problem solved.
Okay, thanks very much. Does anyone else like to speak on this? I've been closed public hearing and let you...
So, uh, was that the, like, the 100-year storm, that one storm? Are you saying every time it rains, that that's...
So you have to address your comments to us, that, to the...
That, that could've been the 100-year storm that flooded every single property in Bloomfield Hills this summer, um, or Bloomfield Township. I just, I, I, I struggle, I, I will 1,000% address any drain issue, that was because of that storm, that does not happen every time, I know for a fact, there is a drain there, we will beef the drain up, we will do, again, I'm willing to work, we'll do whatever it takes. This is, this was not, this is not a, a, a normal, that was not a normal, normal event. That was, and it, there's no pooling, there's no, there's nothing off of that, off of that court, nothing, but I can have an engineer come out and, and do the whole grading, but my, the landscaper did put the, and I can have him beef it up and, and put more of a, a, a catch-all basin.
Okay.
But that's, that's, that is a one-off, and that does not, it does not flood her garage, that is, I mean, I would've heard about that, that, there's, there's just, that's, that's a little bit of a fabrication, and I, I mean, it's fine, I, I agree, I, I'm here to make it right, and I'm here to make her happy.
You'll have someone come out, look at the drain, and then...
Isn't, isn't it a requirement of the township?
It would be part of the review for permitting.
Yeah, I mean, it's just SOP.
Yeah.
We will make sure that that's addressed.
Yes, and it wouldn't be, and if you'd approve the fence, wouldn't that be trying to make the covering work? I don't know why we would postpone it if I'm going to get all that compliant, and then...
So that was her request, where...
Yeah, 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 that's, that was, that's just my question, I'm sorry, okay.
So, okay, so we're, so I, so I'm asking, so you addressed, you're gonna have some come out, look at it, approve the drain?
Yep.
And then what, what is it then, uh, when you say, uh, so there's three different fences there, so...
Well, the, the one just has ivy on it, it, that's, that would be a black, the ivy one is just a chain link one with ivy on it, to make it look green. So it really is just either a wood fence or the chain, it's like a black-coated chain, chain link, it's not, it's, it's not on aluminum, like, it's what most, like, tennis courts or courts would be covered by.
So, so are you saying any of those three is what you're suggesting, or?
I'm suggesting either the ivy one or the wood one.
Okay.
And if somebody has an op, if, if, you know, if Krina has an opinion on one or the, over the other, if she likes the wood, look, I, I'm happy to, again, I'm happy to accommodate, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to...
Trying to make it right, so I got you.
I'm trying to make her happy, yeah.
Okay. And the height of that, at least right now, is eight feet? 'Cause that's tip, much higher than what we typically approve.
Well, it'd be around the court, so that's, 'cause the courts need, I mean, you're gonna have balls go, you have to have some sort of...
Right, so that's what I'm saying, is typically, we have mesh, sort of, net, netting for that.
So you have, so you have permanent posts with mesh, mesh netting?
Yeah.
I can do that, I can do that, too. The issue with that is then I won't have the, I, I couldn't get the ivy-looking cover.
Right.
So that's, I, I'm happy to do...
Right.
Permanent posts and do mesh netting, 'cause right now, the temporary ones with heavy snowfall, they, they, they topple over, that was probably one of the pictures.
Right, now, just saying, for next winter, if you have a hockey rink, you have to come in and get approval for that, too, if you're putting boards up, and we really don't have lights and stuff, so I, I don't know.
It's, the lights were, I mean, it gets dark at 3:30.
I'm just saying, if you have a hockey rink, that's another...
Okay.
...time you have to come back and be entertained here, so...
Awesome.
All right. So, does the board have a, sort of a feeling about the fence thing?
I, I think the, the, a black, black mesh is the best.
Okay.
Six foot?
Well...
It'd have to be higher than that.
Yeah.
I could try six foot.
Well, the, the tough thing is, for sports courts, we typically have them higher for, for the balls, but here, there's sort of a dual purpose, we have to collect the balls, but there's also a privacy need as well, so it's sort of...
Uh, but the mesh isn't gonna create the privacy.
No, it isn't, so that's the, that's the...
That's, that was my solution for the other two. Mesh is a lot cheaper, I mean, I, it's like...
But the sports court doesn't need to be screened.
No, this is just for...
It's, yeah, it's the fence that needs to be screened.
Yep.
So if the fence isn't the issue, then...
I can, again, I screen it from every angle I possibly can, it's already screened in the back by the evergreens in the back, I am gonna plant more things once that's all, you know, permanent posts are, are in. I'm planning on, I know we're not talking about the shed, but I'm, I'm gonna shield that shed from her, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna shield, I'm gonna plant arborvitae's everywhere I possibly can that will grow. That is a 1,000% commitment.
So unfortunately, you, uh, the public hearing's closed, so you're not able to give a rebuttal?
Okay, so the sports court, the sports court, the permission request for the sports court, it would appear to be a non-issue, it's the dimensional variance for the height of the fence that's the issue.
Yep.
There's a variance for the side, for the court as well.
There, there's that one, that, that is the issue, there's that one cor, that one southeastern corner of her, so if, if I were to take it from, um, basically where the...
Yeah, so it encroaches into the side yard setback.
Oh, yes.
That red button.
Okay.
Encroaches into the side yard setback.
Your property plan?
Nope, go to, well, I can, yeah, I can do it that way.
Okay.
So, this is the, this is her, so from here to here is, is, is encroaching, and that's, there's, there was no, I'm butted up to my back, my back patio door. I, I couldn't move over any, and the reason was to get that regulation, it's a, like a pickleball size, that was the smallest court you could put back there, so that was, that was the reason for it. I, I would've, it wouldn't have been used for any, any sort of, any, any sort of activity such as that, if, if we would've gone smaller. And that was the size of the rink, which I will now get approval for as well.
Yeah, so the, the fence... I'm, I'm... I'm, I'm at a loss. And, and I'm at a loss, because our job is to provide approval or denial of a request, not to be involved in the design process, and so I'm, I'm struggling with, with whatever fence you want, um, part, and, and, so I'm, I'm...
Let's call it, I'll do the mesh with the ivy, so she's got a ivy...
I, you're not doing it to make her happy.
No, I think that that is...
You're doing it to satisfy the township's ordinance requirements, that we require for the fence to be screened, okay?
Understand.
That way, it becomes more about you and the township, as opposed to you and the neighbor.
Yep, understood, I, again, I'm just trying to be a good neighbor.
Trying to be helpful, appreciate that.
And I get grumpy when I get tired, so I apologize.
She wants to put up a fence around a sports court, where we typically provide variances would be mesh...
Yeah.
Eight feet.
We've, we've gone...
And that is...
Yeah, we just did one for 10.
Right.
Yeah.
That is basically, you know, we provide some type of...
Yeah, I don't want the wood.
Evergreens or whatever, so she can't see it.
Right.
Yep.
But the issue is she...
Don't have enough room to do that.
I don't have enough, I don't have, I don't have topography, and I mean, I guess, to her point, I, I guess I could throw some more dirt down, like, the trees that were, the trees that were removed were those garbage weed trees, and they were not year-round privacy trees, they got the chrysanthemums, or whatever those are, that get green in the, in the, in the summer, and are just sticks in the winter, and those were an eyesore for us, it was on my property line, I, we didn't like the way they, they, they looked anyway, so tho, those were the, the pri, they were not year-round privacy, anyway, there are not roots down there, it's just, there are, we did plant hostas, hydrangeas, rosebushes, we planted things in there that would, and they're struggling, they're not doing great, they're not, they're not dead, but they're not getting big like my other, my other, you know, plants are, are doing in the, in the rest of the yard, because of the trees, because of the, the, the big trees. Again, I, I, I want to, I want it to be private, I'm, I can try to print, plant arb's down there, I just don't know if they're gonna grow, and then it's, and my, it's on me to replace them, every single time they die. So I don't know how many times I can go through that, to get that approval, and then replace them every year, that's expensive.
So we'd be approving an eight-foot mesh fence with no screening due to a problem that was self-created?
No, there was, well...
Well, the, you can't get, you can't get stuff...
We wouldn't be having this discussion if there wasn't an ice rink or a sports court.
Well, you could see the topography, too, the topography of the, of the...
There's a topographical problem, yeah.
Right.
The, the sports, the sports court itself is, is a, is pretty much a non-issue. Those, at least in my opinion.
Right, it's just the type of fence.
It's just we've gotta put up some fencing of some kind, and, and this is where I don't like having to do her, their design work.
Again, if, if, if mesh is, is what is typically approved, I can put up permanent posts with a, with a mesh fence, and plant as much as possible, and have the bor, and have, and have it reviewed, and see if that passes.
Go ahead and make the motion.
Yes, please.
So, I can make a motion, this should be tabled until the next meeting, so we have accurate information on what the fence is gonna be, how high it's gonna be, what it's gonna be made out of, so we can make a decision here, 'cause we're not a design board.
Well, you have to come back anyway for the shed.
Okay, so that can be included on there, on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess maybe, at that point, you could talk with your neighbor and say, hey, we've talked about it, and this kinda meets the needs, if, if you wanna do that, too.
Okay.
'Cause she seemed, I mean, I'd be, if, if she kinda prefers a six-foot privacy fence that would stop the balls...
She wants it not to be seen, she wants nothing to be seen, yeah.
I, I guess I'd be okay with that, under, under these circumstances.
So I support that motion.[1783.64]
The, the wood fence-
Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Yeah, the motion to postpone, I support.
Okay, so a motion, support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, I have to recuse myself. This is next-
I guess. I guess.
Please make sure you come back after.
I'll come back.
Who's presenting on your behalf?
It's his house.
My VP about race.
Okay.
Calling item nine, 6770 Colby Lane.
And Mr. Chair, um, there is a revision to the request. Um, the pool equipment is not located inside the pool house. It's actually located on the side of the home, screened adjacent to the existing ACs. And it does comply with the ordinance, so that will be eliminated from the variance request tonight.
So the only thing we're dealing with is the fire pit?
The pool house.
Oh, the pool house, okay.
And the-
Got it. Okay. It's the pool equipment.
Pool house. And the kitchenette.
Pool house, kitchenette, and the fire-
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vera Asmar. I'm with Gettleman Construction. Um, our address is 28580 Orchard Lake Road, Farmington Hills. I am here to represent Sherry and Scott Gettleman regarding the pool cabana and fire pit that are adjacent to the pool. Um, the pool is currently under construction. Um, the cabana is generally open with a half-bath and a bar area under the roofline. The cabana and fire pit are both located in the rear of the home and well inside the side and rear side setbacks. The cabana does not exceed the maximum size or height per the ordinance. Uh, the cabana is, cabana, I'm sorry, is designed to match the exterior finishes of the house. And both the cabana and the fire pit will be screened from view of the, of the neighbors. Um, currently there is not an active neighborhood association on Colby Lane.
Okay. Thanks very much. Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close it to, to the public and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request, permission request and request for dimensional variance at 6770 Colby Lane, dealing with the permission request first, I am going to move that it be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to its size or location. Um, with that having been said, um, and with regard to the dimensional variance, I'm going to move-
There's no need for a dimensional variance?
Oh!
Because the AC is compliant.
Oh, that's even better.
There you go.
Then I'm done.
You are done.
Ha!
Support.
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
Congratulations. Your request is-
Thank you, everyone.
I knew I was missing something.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Outstanding presentation.
Calling item, uh-
I think she deserves a raise.
5K65 Lhasa.
I think she deserves a raise.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Keith Lentz, acting as representative of Miller Landscape, which is located at 815 Brown Road in Orion. And I'm here as the designated agent for Tom Callen, who is the homeowner at 5865 Lhasa Road. The primary objective for our design here is to remove the existing non-compliant deck that is in the homeowner's backyard and replace it with half-deck and then a secondary raised patio, which is in a similar footprint to what's on site. And our appeal is for approval of a 14-foot wide and 12-foot long pavilion structure, which is constructed at 14 feet above the raised patio and is 14 feet above the existing deck. But because of the existing grade underneath the deck, it's considered 17 feet above the grade at that space. And additionally, we are looking for approval for the installation of a 54-inch by 54-inch by 12-inch fire feature.
Any questions from the board?
Mm-mm.
Open this up to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back.
So is that all screened from public view?
Well, right now, there's an existing forested area around the back three property lines over there, which consists of a mix of evergreen and deciduous material.
So is it screened from public view?
Yes. Yes, it is.
12 months out of the year?
I believe so.
Okay.
If there's no public to view it, I guess that's the answer. It's like my house. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I don't mind the way this house is. Heck, you can barely see the house.
Yep, hell, I know it well.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, this is where we would make a motion.
Yeah, I can make a motion if no one has questions. Okay. So with regard to the appeal at 5865 Lhasa Road, I'll start with the permission request. I move that it be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6. And that is because the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to the fact that it is within all the setbacks and is going to be screened. With regard to the dimensional variance for the height of the pavilion, I move that that also be approved as requested. Based on the information, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with a strict letter of the ordinance is unduly burdensome because of the topography in the back of the home. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it's going to be screened. And again, it's within the setbacks. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given the topography, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. All necessary permits must be made within one year and should be obtained prior to installation. And I, I'm going to add that evergreen plantings may be required because it has, everything has to be shielded from public view 12 months out of the year.
Understandable.
Support.
So I motion to support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Calling the next item, item 11, 3325 Barron.
Good evening. Jason Bryan from JCB Design and Build, 801 South Adams, Birmingham. On behalf of Dr. and Mrs. Shadid at 3325 Barron Drive, we're requesting a, um, permission to put the pool equipment in the side yard. It's encroaching four foot into that side yard setback. Originally, it was approved to put this on the west side of the house. And, um, upon further design of the house, there was kitchen windows and whatnot that weren't considered. And that's why we're seeking to put it on the east side of the home now. You should have a letter from the neighbor that is adjacent to this property that is in support of it. And we will be screening it with evergreens that will be screened 12 months out of the year.
Any questions from the board? Open it to the public. Anyone like to comment? Give us your name and address.
Good evening. Russ Pogatz, 4106 Water Wheel. I'm the neighbor that Jason spoke of. We met after the last meeting in December. I spoke out and asked the board to consider not allowing anything in the easterly, in the variance in the easterly setback. Um, we met, and, um, look, it's a great house. It's a great development. I want to be a cooperative neighbor. Um, Jason proposed putting the above-ground pool equipment only in the variance to the easterly setback. I support that. I only ask two things. One is that we make sure the screening is appropriate, because I'll see this from every point in my backyard. Um, and I want to make sure that any sound ordinances are followed through, so I don't hear it or I hear it as least as possible. So those are my only two points. And Jason was great to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you're at work, pal.
Anyone else like to speak? All right, close the public hearing and ask for a response on those two points.
I'm, I'm good.
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes.
Okay. Take it back to the board now for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion. Um, in regards to the appeal at 3325 Barron Drive, um, for the proposed pool equipment variance, I move the variance to be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, um, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Basically because of the, um, uh, structure of the lot as well as it would prevent reasonable use of the property. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbor. We're just lucky and, and happy that, um, that you were able to work that out with the adjoining neighbor, um, and come up with a solution. And you made some modifications with that, and it will also be screened. Um, unique circumstances of the property, again, this is probably the best appropriate place for the pool equipment. And, um, because of that, it is not self-created. Um, with that, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And again, additional evergreens plantings will be required to screen the unit from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 12, 4891 Keith Dale Lane.
Hi, Randy Hike with Action Fence at 4300 Delamere Court, Royal Oak, Michigan. On behalf of Denise Burks, the homeowner at 4891 Keith Dale Lane, we're looking to put up a four-foot black aluminum dog attainment fence for her daughter, who's going to be living at this house, who is, uh, um, having some issues with, uh, being able to chase after her dog if you were to get away from her. Um, so that's what we're asking for as far as, yeah, it's all within the letter of explanation that you all have.
Any questions from the board? Open up to the public. Anyone like to comment? Please step to the podium and do so.
Just excuse me. I'm trying to speak up. I'm, uh, getting over a cold. I strongly, strongly object to the placing the fence adjacent to the property line. Um, first of all, the survey that they had completed just recently, um, there's uncertainty about the property line. The current survey is about a foot to a foot and a half further onto my property.
Christine Peterson.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Christine Peterson, 4873 Keith Dale Lane. I'm on the east side of the property. Um, the, the current survey is about a foot to a foot and a half more over onto my property than a survey that was completed in 2016 for the installation of a new septic field. And, um, and, uh, I also happen to have two mortgage surveys that are off by eight feet. So it's, you know, there's, um, nobody can tell me that those, um, survey stakes are pinpoint accurate. Um, the, I installed landscaping. When they did the 2016 survey, I discovered that I had about an additional eight feet of property that was assumed, uh, I've lived in the property for 33 years in June, that I think it was assumed even by the original owners that that was their property because their landscaping had extended significantly over. Uh, when Mrs. Litwin died and Dr. Levine was still living in the house, um, it stopped being maintained. So it's, it kind of got kind of shoddy. So in 2016, I discovered that I had this property that hadn't been maintained for probably close to half a dozen years. And so I cleaned it up, opened it up, I planted all new landscaping along that area. And I had to install, because we're at a large hill, I had to install, like, maybe not even a two-foot retaining wall at the back end to keep dirt from flowing down. So, um, and then I also recently, and that landscape was based on these stake surveys at that time. Um, I also had installed just a year ago-
Apparently a disagreement over where the property line is?
I did.
Because you've got all these different, is there disagreement over where the property line is?
Yeah, it's off by about a foot to a foot and a half.
Okay.
That's all. And they want to put the, uh, fence right on the property line. And I also installed an, an invisible electric dog fence for my dog, um, on the property. And I also took into account that prior survey. And so that's on my property. So if they start cutting into that, they could, you know, I've got landscaping there and I have, uh, an electric dog fence flowing down. Um, this is not a cookie cutter fenced-in neighborhood. It's a natural environment with wide, open spaces. We back up to wetlands. I have photos from different angles, um, uh, that I took today of the property itself.
Who's on here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oops. Jeez. Out of the way, sorry.
Okay. Oh.
Oops.
Okay. So that's the back end. We back up to wetlands, lone pines on the other side of the wetlands. Okay, that's the easterly view. And then, um, I have similar images from, uh, this is the center view. And this is the westerly view, and that's toward the Russ's house, where they're proposing putting in the fence. The fence was going to go probably about halfway down on the property line, halfway down to, before the, uh, utility pole. And, um, this is supposed to be an application-
So, is there any location for the fence that's acceptable to you?
I would be, I would entertain, um, some type of a variance, um, possibly up to 16 feet. It's a funny corner because the corner, the back end of the corner of Russ's house is only about six to seven feet from the property line. So the back corner of the house is, you know, only six to seven feet from the property line. Um-
So, so I'm not sure what location is acceptable to you. What, what are you saying?
Well, it's a, it's a 16-foot, uh, variance. I would say making it, moving it in at least another six feet.
Okay.
Six, six feet away from the property line.
Okay.
And the prob- they're talking about installing a dog fence. There's plenty of property to install a dog fence, um, and provide security for their daughter, Randall, um, who, uh, is dealing with health issues. And I know the Burks have presented pictures, I believe. At least they gave them to me. I thought they presented them for the meeting, where they presented their, um, daughter with a, I don't know if they submitted it to the meeting, if they haven't. Uh, I won't talk about that part of it, because we're talking about their daughter and their health conditions.
Yeah, we're just talking about the dog.
If they haven't presented that, I'm not going to speak to it.
Great.
Okay. So that's, um, I'm willing to live with, um, you know, keeping it within, you know, up to 10 feet from the, the property line.
Got it. Okay. Thanks very much.
Okay.
Does anyone else like to speak on this? So I'll close the public hearing and then have the applicant come and respond.
I'm sorry?
You can sit down now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Closing the public hearing. You can have the applicant come and, uh-
Hi, thank you. Um, I think we were trying to be respectful of the wide-open spaces by containing the fence. I mean, we split the yard effectively in half by bringing the fence up the hill, so that when you look down the hill, you didn't see fence all the way at the bottom. Um, and as far as moving the fence in from the property line, there's actually a septic tank right there. There's a picture on somewhere here. There's two, actually, two lids roughly six or eight feet off the property line, that even going down the property line, I'm going to have to hand-expose everything, because I don't know where anything's at. It's going to be a crapshoot already, trying to dig on the property line as far as missing the septic tank and/or field in the area.
The quarter itself is only about, the back quarter is only about six to seven feet.
The tank is on the property line or the field?
I don't know. There's two lids. Roughly, I mean, if I lay down from my foot to the, to my head, it's roughly six, seven feet away from the property line. The two big green lids. So, and they just bought the property, so they don't know, really know where anything's at.
Is anybody else uncomfortable making a decision when there's a dispute on the property line?
Dispute on the property line? We don't know where the septic field is. We don't know, so we don't know where to safely put the fence if we're going to put it anywhere. I mean-
Yep.
My thought would be if I'm on the property line, septic tank shouldn't be over the line.
Yeah, but it sounds like there's a disagreement over where the property line is. There's different surveys. different surveys.
I'd like to add-
So the public hearing's closed, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, so I mean, I-
We don't have anything we can approve or reject, and-
Right. I hate to keep adding these to future agendas, but there's, I don't think there's enough here that, that we should be, I don't think there's enough here for us to be making any kind of action, other than to postpone, so I'm going to make a motion to postpone.
But we have to give them some, what do we need? We have to, I think, give some guidance and say-
We need some specificity.
We've had a certified surveyor come out and survey the property.
They're saying, put it on the property line, it's just there's a disagreement with the neighbor over where that is.
Somehow that's got to get resolved.
Well, I think also the plan could be a little bit more detailed, so it's clear where some of these impediments are that might lead to the board making a decision.
Right.
I don't know how I would locate the septic field.
We can re-shoot lid's location.
Yeah.
Yeah, the lids are there, those two big, their lids are there, I can see where those are.
Could be sprinkler valves even.
I'm sorry, you're who?
I'm the homeowner, I'm Denise Burke.
All right, do you want to, so I guess you're responding to the public comments, so if you have anything helpful that will-
I'm sorry?
If you have anything helpful that was short in the evening, we appreciate it.
My husband Russ Burks and I own the home, our 24-year-old disabled daughter lives there. She has a support animal, she has a connective tissue disease, someday she's in a wheelchair. She needs to be able to let out the support dog to go potty. Whatever the property line is determined, we're not trying to break any rules. We'll do it wherever the proper property line is. We need a fence to keep her safe. That is a huge hill that goes, if a little puppy goes running, a ball goes down, she can't go fetch them, she has to have it enclosed, it's very tight, you can see in that window right, or in that bottom right-hand picture. It's a very small yard, enclosing, just so that at night, when she lets out Bella to go potty, she can safely go back in. This is to keep our kids safe.
Right, so we understand the need, but were you aware that your neighbor disagrees with where the-
Oh, we don't know, we-
Property line is, or-
If that's not the survey line, then we'll change it, we'll go where it needs to. If it is, it, it sounds like her dog fence is on our side, and we said we'll already pay for it, to repair it, if we hit it accidentally. So I guess we need to get another survey if she, does she want to pay for another survey?
I'm, can I have to get one that everybody agrees to, because until-
Well, the applicant will have to submit a accurate survey to show where the fence line is, that's your responsibility. Should there be a dispute, then that'll be a civil matter between the two property owners.
Right.
But you'll be obligated to make sure that your survey is-
And I suppose if, in response, she wants to submit her survey, so that we, you know, have that in the record.
I think that's why we got the-
They've already submitted one?
They've already submitted a survey.
Yeah, they've already submitted a survey.
We, we paid for a survey specifically for this.
As long as it's sealed and we'll accept it, then we'll, we have to honor that.
Okay, all right, I get it.
So we have, so we-
Okay, so given that survey, what kind of direction can we provide?
Well, the question becomes, where do you, where do you, where do you allow the fence to go?
Well, the, the neighbors suggested, or said that there'd be open if, if it was moved in just a bit, I think it was six feet or so, would you be willing to move it in?
The septic tank.
The septic-
Oh, the septic tank, oh, so it can't be, it's right at-
That's, that's, that was his response to the comment.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you show that illustration on that graphic? I guess I'm not seeing that the, your proposal is actually where the two septic tanks are. It's the graphic, oh, yeah, at the bottom.
Down at the bottom.
Yeah, they see the two-
That's the Action Fence survey.
Yeah, at the bottom, well, that's my proposal drawing, so at the bottom you can see the two-
But there's clearly a distance between your proposed line and those two.
Yes, but if that's the tank, the tank is going to go either direction from those lids.
You don't have to determine that, and you don't know what that dimension is.
I mean, that tank could be 20 years old, knowing where exactly it's at, who knows?
Yeah.
That's why I said, even at this property line, we're going to have to hand-expose all the holes.
Where is the entrance that the resident would be using to let out the dog? Where is that located? Is that located along the side, the rear edge of the house, or the very back?
At the very back, there, kind of to the right of where those two covers are, there's a sliding glass door. It's in one of the pictures.
Okay.
Do you want to use this pointer to point on the, on the doggy, where they're letting it out, so the red button can tap together?
So there's a door right here, right in the lower level. If you flip through the other picture, you can see it. Keep going.
Oh, yeah.
Right there, well, one more. Nope, okay, so-
It's that door, yeah.
It's the door that is right here.
Okay.
So if we were to move the fence in the six feet, you're going to be in the window for the one, if you go too far, and then if you go to the right of this window, you're going to be right, right, that's right where the septic tanks are. So I really don't see another place to put it.
I think you can see the septic tanks from there, there. You've got that, you've got that stretching out, area on the right stretching out, I think the-
They're right here.
Area, those, it's over in the snow, I think those are the septic caps. The septic caps are more over than not, close to the property. I can tell you that.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I want to see something specific.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't sound like they have another way to do it.
But, but I-
Unless they expose the tanks and there's a space in between the two to put a post, or go around them, maybe the tanks are more inbound of the property line and there is room.
Right.
And the openings are at the, you don't know until you expose it.
Right.
You'd have to dig it all up. Go a test hole and see what makes sense, I think.
How many feet below the surface are they typically, is it right up underneath the sod?
Yeah, 18 inches down, maybe.
Not far. Just enough for the grass to grow. Matter of fact, if it gets too hot sometimes, it'll die because the sod on top of the tank is too hot.
So do we postpone, what do we do?
So we have a survey-
Postpone with the township.
Yep, so we have a survey that the township says is sealed, we can rely on.
And they should dig a test hole to see what's going on.
They also should have some idea where the tanks are when they do, when the, it's, it's not rocket science, all you need is about an eight-foot metal rod, jab it in the ground when it's soft, and you'll find the top of the tank. It's where the septic field is that becomes the issue. If there's two tanks, they're not likely to be pushed together, likely to be separate.
Okay.
So then we need to postpone until we get more information about where the tanks are located.
I think that's a reasonable approach.
Yeah.
Given the information you've given.
Okay, so a motion to postpone to figure out where the septic tanks are.
Which will can provide further guidance on where to place the fences.
Support. Motion in support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we just compromise on something right now, have her tell me when I need to move the fence in?
He's saying you can't because there's-
He just said that you can't because of the septic-
We don't know where it's safe to move it.
If that comes to the point, then we'll come back now, but I need a fence there now, she's in danger. What does she want, to be over on our-
All right, hold on a second.
No.
If it has to come over two feet or three feet, and we're going to try to make it work, we'll figure out what we need to do to make it work. She needs that fence to be safe.
Well, that was a suggestion that was put out there, but then we were told that you can't do it.
I have not been able to hear you all night, I'm sorry, I have a-
I'll, I'll start, no problem. No, there was a suggestion, I mean, a neighbor had made a suggestion that I actually did bring up, that if you could move the fence in to appease your neighbor, but it was, we were told that you couldn't do that because of the septic tanks that were there. So that was no longer an option, which led us to the postponement, until we know exactly where that is.
But, but if the tanks are in the way, then we won't put the fence in. Could we get approval today, taking it in to an acceptable amount for her, and if it does not work, then we come back again.
Okay.
It's okay.
We're not opposed.
She said six feet.
They're stopping on the property line.
She said six feet in.
Yes.
I think that's- You know, it's hard when you say, I didn't, maybe I should-
Jesus. We could, we could approve, we could approve it, and then the rest of the world, we have a survey. And that's a survey.
So we're talking about where the septic-
Brian, Brian, Brian.
I want to know where you want the fence.
We return the discussion back to the board?
Yeah.
Yes.
In three feet? We'll deal with the septic, deal with issues. Christine, you want the fence?
All right, so hold on a second. So if you two want to go and discuss this, and reach an agreement, and, and then we'll, so we can postpone it till, you two can talk, and we'll bring you back at the end if you can reach an agreement. All right. So, so you can go out, outside and discuss it.
The other people who are here don't have to live, live through your deliberations.
So we have a motion and a, and a second to postpone, so they can discuss the other acceptable location. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, any opposed? Go ahead.
Let's, let's move along.
Good evening, Matt Mosier here to represent the homeowner at 3950 Franklin Road. There's going to be a swimming pool installed in the rear yard. The neighbor, or I'm sorry, the homeowner also owns the property to the north, above it, and, which encompasses like an overall very large estate. The house itself is about 110 feet away from the pool, and approximately 18 feet above the top of water. As I've been to you before with this, is you, you can't get enough lift with the pumps and you end up burning them out. So because this property is large, he owns both lots, in fact, he's in the process of designing an accessory cabana on the other lot, which they'll be combined. We're suggesting that this equipment be put in this location for pool use, it's hundreds of feet from each neighbor. The area where the equipment would go, kind of back where you see that light gate back there, is heavily vegetated, and we're going to be putting some extra screening, so nobody, even a drone will probably see the equipment. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions in the board? I'll open this to the public, anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back.
Mr. Chairman, with request for dimensional variance at 3950 Franklin Road, I'm going to move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because we do have some lift issues with topography. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, and in fact, this is a pretty secluded piece of property, since he happens to own both lots. Unique circumstances of the property, again, have been demonstrated by its topography, which certainly was not self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen screening to screen from public view is going to be required, but I'm not certain how necessary it is, since I know that you're going to do a great job on that to start with, so.
Support.
Motion in support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling item 14.
Your children are back. Good evening, my name is Mark Clifford, my wife Katie is here, we live at 3458 Bloomfield Club Drive, and Rob Clark is our architect. He has drawn up a plan for a deck on the back of our home. We are seeking to, a variant to go into the setback by 10 feet. We have an unusual back lot line that's at a diagonal, that does not allow us to go, you know, straight back without obtaining this variance.
Okay, thanks. Any questions from the board? Open up to the public, anyone here like to speak on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion. For the appeal at 3458 Bloomfield Club Drive with regard to the dimensional variance, I move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the, the way that the house is situated on the lot, or rather where the property line is. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbor by reason of the fact that there is already a deck there. There are unique circumstances with the property, having been demonstrated, again, given the lot shape, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. All necessary permits have to be made within one year and should be obtained prior to construction.
Support. Motion in support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
On the next item, item 15.
Good evening, I'm Botin Eymath, resident at 1903 Lone Pine. The variance we're seeking today is to, is for an existing condition of the sports court in my backyard. We have adjusted a lot line that resulted in a 12-foot distance from the new lot line, the distance before the adjustment was zero. So basically, we're trying to bring, create a condition that's legal and in compliance.
Okay, yeah, so you're encroaching into the westerly lot line 12 at a 16 feet.
That's correct. The dotted line you see coming straight down from the tennis court right from the, where the three parcels meet, that was the original border. We shifted that to the west 12 feet.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment. Close it, public comment, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the permission request and request for dimensional variance at 190, excuse, 1903 Lone Pine Road. Permission request first, I'm going to move that the permission request be granted based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with section 42-7.6 standards. Location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to its location or the height of the, of the basketball court. With that having, or the basketball net. With that having been said, with regard to the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that the, it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, and in fact, is unnecessary because of the property configuration. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, in fact, there's plenty of distance between the property and the lot lines, excuse me, where the neighbors are. Unique circumstance, excuse me, unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given the configuration of the land, which certainly is not self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing sports court. I don't have a need to require additional evergreen screening at this time. I do need to indicate that no illumination is permitted, and that the use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours.
Support.
Motion in support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Item 16.
Congratulations, Board, on a long evening. My name is Nicholas Guzik, I represent Financial and Flexible Investment, as well as Signorama, and we're requesting a variance for a setback. There is an existing sign at the location, and based upon all the records, there was no, I guess, sign permit pulled for this sign 20 years ago or so, so the sign is- So the sign is in bad shape. We're requesting a new sign at the existing footing, so we don't have to take the footing out, put the electrical in. We'll sit the sign exactly where the existing footing is and it would be the same dimension as the existing sign.
And will you have any landscaping around the base?
There will be landscaping around the base, yes.
Okay.
The sign permits have been approved for this, however, we needed to come back for a variance based upon the setbacks.
Okay, I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion for this at 3883 Telegraph Road for the dimensional variance. I move it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it would make it difficult for customers to find this property on busy Telegraph Road. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbor by reason of the fact that this sign has actually been there for, what did you say, over two decades?
Correct.
Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given its location on Telegraph Road. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. All of your necessary permits must be made within one year and should be obtained prior to installing the sign, and there will have to be landscaping around the base.
Support. Motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 17, 1983 South Telegraph.
Good evening. Bob with Allied Signs located at 33650, representing Kellico.
Make your, make your note.
Oh. Open your on 17?
I'm 17.
I don't think so, but okay.
This parack is right.
I'm sorry.
Hi, collective.
It's been a long night.
Yes.
Am I on? Am I, is this me? Okay. My name is Steve Brettz. I reside in Macomb Township at 17924 Autumn Lane, and I'm with Philip Sign and Lighting, representing Akitz Pie. Akitz Pie contracted with us last fall for a wall sign at this location and in addition, tenant panels for the existing ground sign. There is one property owner here, the shopping center owner, and they offer the ground sign to assist tenants with business recognition. The ground sign was previously approved as part of the shopping center development. Tenant panels in the ground sign will help customers see where Akitz Pie is located. They sit back off of Telegraph Road a little bit, actually behind a Xfinity building, I think, there. So, there's, there's gonna be a nice wall sign on the building, but it sits back way away so that the tenant panels will help out front near Telegraph. Our request for tenant panels conforms to signage already in place for other tenants in the same shopping center. Thank you for your time tonight for this consideration.
Any questions from the board?
No questions, I can make a motion.
Well, let me open up to the public.
Yes, please.
Anyone that would like to comment? Close the public hearing now, please.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, my pleasure. With regard to the appeal at 1983 South Telegraph Road for the dimensional variance, I move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it would be too difficult for people to find the location. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that they're also commercial users and have similar signs. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given its commercial nature and location on Telegraph Road. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. All of your permits should be made within one year and must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
A motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request.
Thank you.
Item 18, 1933 South Telegraph.
Once again, item 18 couldn't come up quick enough tonight.
Once again, it's, my name's Bob with Allied Signs.
Thought is shared by many.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm here representing Kellico. We're seeking a variance for some non-illuminated flat cutout letters for the south elevation of the building for visibility for traffic heading northbound on Telegraph. There're kind of a, a tight little driveway there and with multiple driveways to other shopping areas, it's kinda like a little confusing which driveway you could access Kellico with. So they're hoping by putting the letters on the east, the south elevation of the building, it'll help the consumer find their driveway a little bit sooner than having to make the dreaded roundabouts on Telegraph, so.
Any questions from the board? Open it to the public. Any comment? Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. I've done that. What he just talked about.
You're familiar with the format.
I'm familiar, I missed it. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion in regards to the appeal at 1933 South Telegraph Road for secondary signage. I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without that sign, it would not be as visible and on especially on a busy road like Telegraph, there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. Actually, I think this will be also a safety issue as well because I, well, I won't say what I do, but I almost missed it, but there will be no injustices. The unique circumstances of the property, again, because you have multiple driveways and entrances, I think it'll make it much more visible for those who are looking for Kellico. And because of that, it's not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
So recalling item 12, 4891 Keithdale.
So we're going to get a better idea of where the septic system is, get that plotted out on a, on a plan and then come back to you guys. Hopefully, are we able to get into the next meeting?
If you can give me an answer as soon as like Monday or Tuesday next week, we can, we'll, give me a call.
I'll need some time to get the plans together, but yeah.
Call planning, we'll see what we can do depending on what's being proposed.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna try and find out where the septic is.
Okay.
I think it's only fair to everybody that you guys can make a better decision based on complete information versus incorrect information.
How long this works for us from land?